I'm going to call the order, our regular CAC Council meeting on Tuesday, February 27th. We did not have a closed session. If you will please rise and join me in a pledge. President, the governor, would you...
I am Elijah Legions, President of the United States of America, and to your Republic, Congress, and my nation under our umbrella, invisible, liberty, justice, law.
This is Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman C. A. Thorne Taylor.
Here.
Councilwoman A. C. Thorne Torres.
Here.
Councilwoman C. A. Thorne Van.
Here.
Mayor Cortez-Price-Chavez Morrison.
Here.
And Mayor Shannon Shobin.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number five, Special Presentations and Awards. The first one is going to be by our CEAC, which is our Community Engagement Advisory Committee. They're going to be sharing their mission with the city council and providing information on their current operations. Go right up, Anne.
Thank you. City Mayor Shobin and city council members, manager and directors. Very happy to be here and very proud of having my CAC present tonight. So, as you may know, you've heard the name a lot, you see it in the magazine and that. But I often think that people don't know the faces of the CAC members. So, I am so proud and so excited that you get to see my family, my work family here, and to hear a little bit about what they are doing and why they belong to CAC. So, we are going to start with Darlene, who is going to tell about our mission.
Anne, if you want, you can take the microphone. She can sit or stand over this microphone.
Yeah? I'm here now, so. Getting up, pat the battle. I'm Darlene Stedham. My husband and I have been members of CAC for eight years now. We traveled for sixteen years after he retired in an RV. And once we settled in Westminster, now living in Anaheim, we wanted to give back. And what we found was CAC and here in Stanton. And we've been glad members for the past eight years. Community Engagement Advisory Committee is a volunteer group, Stanton Family Resource Center, and is dedicated to making a difference throughout our community. We make a difference because we are different cultures and communities. What is our mission? Our mission is to create a meaningful exchange and meaningful change in the city of Stanton. Our community members work, live in and around Stanton. We act as ambassadors through FRC and promote activities that enhance our city. We are a community that brings together a diverse group of voices who want to contribute to making Stanton a better place for people to live, work, and play.
Hola, mi nombre es Barbara Pilaey. Represento al comité de CAC por... Bueno, estoy nuevamente. Yo estuve anteriormente cuando se comenzó el comité. Este, estuve también de voluntaria y ahora como estuve trabajando, dejé de participar. Pero hoy nuevamente vuelvo otra vez a este comité porque me ha dado mucho para poder seguir sirviendo a esta ciudad y a todos los que están a nuestro alrededor. Soy de la ciudad de mi hijo y tengo cinco hijos, de los cuales ellos crecieron ahí, en la ciudad, aquí en el Centro Comunitario Santa Paula. Es donde nosotros siempre estuvimos de voluntarios y para ellos fue mucha ayuda. Y por eso otra vez estoy aquí ayudando. A mí me toca compartir el programa de las clases que nosotros recibimos como miembros. Vamos a... Nos reunimos dos veces al mes regularmente para hablar de... Tenemos puntos informales, pero también este... A veces tenemos invitados, de los cuales nos hablan de diferentes tópicos que nos ayudan a crecer a nosotros como comunidad y como comité. Tenemos también la... Tuvimos una clase que habló acerca del tráfico humano, que nos ayudó mucho como papás, pero también nos ayudan nosotros como miembros de esta ciudad para ver qué es lo que podemos nosotros hacer y qué tenemos en nuestro apoyo como comité para poder apoyar a ustedes en esta ciudad también. También tuvimos un entrenamiento en la ciudad de Santana con la señora Dolores Huerta, que nos habló acerca de liderazgo. Cómo podemos ser mejores líderes en nuestra casa, pero también dentro de nuestra comunidad. También tuvimos otra, otro proyecto donde hablaban del doctor Martin Luther King Jr. Este, tuvimos un proyecto, se estuvo haciendo bolsitas para ayudar a las personas que viven en la calle. También tuvimos otra clase que nos hablaron acerca de la violencia doméstica, cómo provenirla y si, por ejemplo, hay personas que ya están ahí, pues qué es lo que se puede hacer para poder ayudarlas. También tenemos a un otro comité pequeño que habla sobre American On Track, que también este, es un gran apoyo para nosotros y para también dentro de la ciudad. Ellos tienen también una este... Ellos tienen un programa que está ahorita sobre, acerca de prevención del tabaco, sobre todo que están los jóvenes inhalando las pipas y todo eso que les está causando daño a sus pulmones, siendo tan jóvenes. Entonces, tienen un proyecto para que les ayuden a estar libres de ese humo que contamina nuestro cuerpo. Y a eso, por eso ellos están tan jóvenes, ¿verdad? Y también tenemos, pues, diferentes eventos, en los eventos de la ciudad, que también somos voluntarios. Cuando tienen alguna... Y tienen que nosotros podamos ayudar, pues ahí está también el comité para que nosotros podamos ayudar las personas que puedan hacerlo, pues estamos ahí. Los proyectos que tenemos, que vienen, este, futuros, tenemos el del Alpoblistón Azul, que es en el día marzo 30, el día de la máscara también. Ahí tenemos este, vamos a tener algunas actividades para la familia, para que se construyan mejores familias y más fuertes. También tenemos el este... El día 15 de abril tenemos una clase de educación, de educación para crear más familias que sean más saludables en cuestión sobre lo que es la prevención y abuso de niños, ¿verdad? Que esto es lo que es lo del Blue Ribbon, para la prevención de que no abusen de los niños. Y también el día 18 de abril tenemos una actividad aquí en la biblioteca de aquí de Santo. Se le va a leer a un grupo de niños preescolares. También tenemos la participación, under the same paint the town with love, el 4 de mayo. Y también tendremos otra clase que nos va a estar hablando acerca de la diabetes, para prevenirla y para los que todavía no la tienen, para que no la tengan. Y los que ya tengan, saber cómo, cómo manejarla. Y por último tenemos clases también que hablan acerca de cómo hacer ejercicio para que no estemos personas... Sobre todo nos conocemos con otras personas, pero para no vivir en sedentarismo y que aprendamos a ser más saludables. Gracias.
We have a few, I think we have a few photos from our CAC members. It's Mr. Shobin with one of our CAC members at the state of the city last week, and our groups in different activities, so I think we're just presenting to the city Family Resource Center. And what we think. And now we have Hannah Hannah, who's going to come up and speak to us.
Yeah. My name is Hannah Hannah, I'm from Villa. I lived in Garden Grove for thirty-five years, but I volunteered for Stanton. Each year, the Stanton CAC group, along with the community, was together to share stories on different topics. We have completed four books. Our plan for this year is to write about communities. Each time our members write their story, they are given voice to what they have spent in their life and within. And I have my books to read.
We have, as Hannah said, we've done four books. And we have the English and Spanish. We asked our members and community members to write something about a topic. So this year, we are going to do a book on community, what it means belongs to community. Thank you, Hannah. Good job.
Hello, my name is Ivy and I'm a proud member of the CAC. CAC volunteers have been working with food distribution and the opening of the Family Resource Center. Distribution is now taking place at Pacific Center. On the third Wednesday of each month, CAC volunteers help to add and distribute food to approximately one hundred fifty pounds. This food is available to anyone who asks for it.
Thank you. I know the next line says, "Marina," and many of them unfortunately they were not able to meet it, but we have people Stephanie, who's going to come up and say for us.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Stephanie Bryce and I moved to California in 2013. And since then, I've been part of the CAC team. I'm so happy to be part of CAC. They helped me get out of my comfort zone because I'm alone. So I'm going to read about the National Alliance on Mental Health. A national alliance on mental illness is part of the NAMI War. Stanton has... Stanton CAC has been participating in the NAMI War since 2019. Our members, excuse me, are committed to stopping out the stigma of mental illness. We know that when we educate ourselves about mental well-being, we can educate our communities. Our team's name is Stanton Sigma Smashers. This year, we had eighteen walkers and we were proud to represent Stanton. Thank you.
Finally, we had two of our members, one in English and one in Spanish, speaking about their reasons for wanting to see.
Good evening. My name is Marimar Ambaran. I'm from Australia. I have lived in the USA for eleven years. I joined CAC last year and I love it. What I like most about this group is admitting new friends, finding support in the community, learning new things, and volunteering. I think CAC is a great group. That wants, that wants to support our community. Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Rosa León. Yo permanezco en el programa de CAC. En el programa de CAC tengo aproximadamente como de diez a once años y voluntaria del Centro Comunitario como quince. Yo estoy orgullosa de permanecer a este programa porque a mí me ha ayudado mucho, mentalmente, emocionalmente. Mi esposo tuvo una sedi hasta el 2015 y él estuvo entre la vida y la muerte, más bien ya lo dieron a su muerte. Yo me empuje mucho en el programa CAC, en los programas de la comida, para repartir la comida porque yo sentía que ellos tenían que salir de la casa porque yo no estaba allá. Yo no, no era yo ya en la casa, por tanto problema que tenía mi esposo. Él quedó muy mal. Yo ya no sabía qué hacer con él. Entonces, yo ya estaba en el programa de CAC y me empujé mucho en el programa y me, la mente se me iba, me distraía mucho. Incluso yo le dije a mi esposo que fuera él para que se despejara la mente y él decía que no. Le dije a él, yo, por favor, ve una vez, una vez, no te gusta, ya no regreso. Y lo convencí de que fuera y le gustó mucho. Estuvo bien distraído, compartiendo comida, mirando diferentes personas, diferentes... A él le ayudó muchísimo esa. Por eso yo me siento muy orgullosa de permanecer en el programa CAC. Incluso tenemos muchos programas. Yo soy voluntaria, deja, para Halloween, para el quiste, para todos los que me llamen. Y yo me siento bien, ahí estoy porque a veces no estoy bien de salud. Pero cuando yo puedo, yo estoy y muy orgullosa de estar ahí. Hay diferentes programas. Yo he sido voluntaria de aquí del city. Me retiré un poco por mi salud, pero algunos añitos estuve aquí en el city. Son buenos de el Centro Comunitario. De todo lo que me digan, ahí estoy. Incluso cuando el programa, aquí hay programas en el centro, que hay es el... ¿Cómo se llama? Como para el cinco de mayo, el sextiembre. Yo soy la que preparo, preparo las aguas. Ustedes no están para saber que yo preparo, contadla. Pero preparo las aguas. Yo me empujo mucho en todos esos programas porque a mí me han ayudado mucho. Muchas gracias.
So again, we want to thank you. Rose was just saying how CAC has really supported her. Her husband had an accident in 2015 and it was very hard. She encouraged him to come to CAC, even if it was for one time. And he's a member of CAC, which is great. And she talked about emotional and mental support. And I think that's what we do. We care about each other. We care about our community. And again, we're very grateful to be here and to thank you for the invitation to present to you.
I just have a quick comment. Muchas gracias a todos que vinieron a hablar. Yo sé que es bien difícil. Ustedes tienen tanta energía hacer muchas cosas para ayudarnos en la ciudad. Y yo sé que nosotros también estamos orgullosos. Muchas gracias. Thank you for coming. I know it's hard to speak Spanish, especially in a place where you're not supposed to be English speakers. So thank you. And you guys helped so much.
Anne, the last, we could talk a little bit about some of the city-sponsored events that you hope to participate in. Could you give us maybe some of the ones that aren't city-sponsored that you guys put together? And just try to give us pretty far two examples.
I think, you know, it's a mix of city events and things where we're educating people in the community. For example, last week we did the human trafficking workshop, which was amazing. Clint Tran from Waymakers did that. It was absolutely amazing. We did it in English and Spanish. And one of the things I want to say is that it's so important for us to listen to the voices of the people and to be able to... It's hard sometimes to do English, Spanish, Vietnamese, Arabic, whatever the language is, but how important that is. And the group was saying before we came in that it's really, you know, about connecting to each other, even when we don't understand each other, that we feel that we're seen and we're heard. So, human trafficking was one, domestic violence, American on Track. There are a number of things that we really tried to do. The Martin Luther King Project was very important to us because Mr. Ren and the group doing the homeless outreach, we really wanted to do something, and the group said that they wanted to do something to change the situation of the unhoused. So, we realized we can't provide housing for everybody at this moment, but we could do something very small. And we were very proud to have done a hundred and sixty hygiene bags. And that was all donations. So, that's pretty amazing. And we intend to continue that if we have the support. So, thank you again.
You know, the CEAC is going to play a very important role in upcoming projects that the city has. And we're going to work closely with you folks because we're going to be addressing human trafficking in our city. And so, we're going to need a lot of help. So, Hannah's going to reach out to you with our staff and the council's going to be behind you a hundred percent. We're going to, we're going to do the very best job we can in eliminating that look at our city events. Everybody, thank you. Okay, our next presentation is from Citizens Take Action. They're going to be sharing their mission with the city council and providing information on their current operations, campaign finance laws, and transparency and ethical government.
All right, well, thank you, mayor and council members. I'm David Burner. I'm an attorney and the president of Citizens Take Action, which is a nonprofit that focuses on campaign finance reform and transparency in government. I greatly appreciate the sincere consideration you're giving to this topic. My goal tonight is to give you a clear understanding of campaign finance law, highlight some of the challenges caused by what you might call an imbalanced campaign finance system, and walk you through what you can do with legislators to enact reforms and improve transparency. Normally, I start these presentations with an explanation of how the Supreme Court has shaped campaign finance law. But I understand you're going to get some information about the legal aspect of this later in the evening. So I'm largely going to skip ahead to the big conclusion of the four major pillars of the campaign finance law. First, campaign contribution limits are legal. Second, limits on independent expenditures, which is money used to support a ticket that is not given directly to their campaign, are illegal. Publicly financed elections are generally legal and disclosure requirements are generally legal. So that's the framework we have to work within. And I think most people agree that despite those parameters, there are still some challenges in the federal, state, and local campaign finance system. So I'd like to touch on those before we start moving on local government. The first challenge is that the reality and appearance of pay-to-play politics still exists. Studies show that large campaign contributors typically gain more access to elected officials and that legislation tends to go in their favor over time. At the federal level, it may be pharmaceutical companies or big tech. At the local level, it is more commonly real estate developers, labor unions, or waste managing companies spending money to influence elections. And polls show that around eighty percent of Americans believe major campaign donors have too much influence over elected officials. A second challenge is excessive influence from outside your jurisdiction or outside your city. Our current system allows your campaigns to be funded primarily or even entirely by people who don't live within the jurisdiction. Throughout Orange County, our study, elections is common for eighty percent, ninety percent or more of all campaign contributions to candidates to come from outside of the city. And that troubles voters who prefer that the money funding their elections comes from the people that they're actually willing to represent. A third challenge is that the current system greatly favors wealthy candidates, particularly those who can afford to self-finance their own campaigns. And that makes it difficult for a more diverse group of candidates to succeed. These factors taken together diminish public trust in government, create a perception of undue influence, and in some cases, discourage public participation. People feel like their voice isn't going to be heard over a large campaign owner. They're less likely to participate in the process. And given that democracy depends on a critical mass of people being informed and engaged, that's disturbing. So the question is, how can we work within the legal boundaries to address those challenges and give residents confidence in our campaign finances? To help answer that question, we created a report card that grades cities on the strength of their campaign finance laws and the transparency of campaign finance data. The goal was to assess where cities stand, offer recommendations for reforms, and just provide information to residents. We published report cards covering every city in Orange County, every city in San Diego County. We've got other counties on the way soon. So I'll walk you through those report cards. They grade cities on eight criteria. And for each criteria, I'll go over our standard recommendation, overall findings, so you get a sense of how common these reforms are, this precise situation here in Stanton, and then examples from cities that we thought did well and scored high. When you're done, you'll have a menu of options to consider, actions you can think about. So, there are two major areas that we covered in our report card. How campaigns are financed and the transparency of information. Let's start with campaign finance. First thing we looked at was whether a city has enacted any campaign contribution limits of their own on contributions by individuals or political action committees to candidates. There's a default limit set by the state of fifty-five hundred dollars. We recommend a limit of one thousand dollars on contributions by individuals and two thousand dollars or less by PACs. Obviously, the less money that an individual or entity can contribute, the less a perception or reality of undue influence. And lower campaign contribution limits give residents more confidence that leaders are truly focused on what's best for the community, not on rewarding a large campaign contributor. I also want to be clear that we're talking strictly about limits on contributions to candidates. I believe in a previous meeting, the mayor mentioned ballot measures and how spending connects with those. The limits we're suggesting apply only to candidates and not to ballot measures. In terms of overall findings, based on the data where our report cards were published, in Orange County, fifteen of thirty-four cities have enacted their own campaign contribution limits. The average was one thousand forty-two dollars. San Diego County, thirteen of eighteen cities have, and the average limit was five hundred and thirty-five dollars. So, the majority of cities we studied have enacted their own campaign contribution limits. In Stanton, you have not enacted your own campaign contribution limit, so the default of fifty-five hundred dollars still applies. We looked at some high-scoring cities and with a population similar to Stanton or higher. And as you can see, it's fairly common for cities to have a limit of five hundred to one thousand dollars if their Stanton size is similar. And you could argue that because Stanton has district elections, lower limits make more sense because district candidates don't necessarily need citywide mass mailers that you'll even have large election. You may also be curious how cities handle it if they have by-district council members and you have large mayor. Often, they will have different limits for the council race and the mayoral race. For example, San Diego has a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar limit for council races and a thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-dollar limit for the mayoral race. The next criteria we considered was whether a city has a limit or prohibition specifically on contributions from city contractors or developers. Uh, this addresses the same pay-to-play issue with general contribution limits by targeting the people or entities that are seeking to do direct business with the city. Our recommendation was a limit of five hundred dollars or less within six months before or after the height of being discussed. Uh, interestingly, a new state law, SB fourteen thirty-nine, when it would begin to affect in twenty-twenty-three, uh, enacted a similar restriction. I believe you'll get more details on that. But essentially, it triggered some recusal requirements and limits pertaining to contributions of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or more. So, what we recommended initially is in effect to an extent now, but we still recommend closing some of those. Overall, four cities in Orange County, three in San Diego County, had enacted their own unique limits. And, uh, that reform is especially important, in our opinion, in cities that have an inactive general campaign contribution. In Stanton, there is no unique limit, so SB fourteen thirty-nine is what applies. The highest four in cities, uh, Coronado and National City, both enacted a prohibition on contributions from prospective city contractors and developers from the commencement of negotiation to the completion of performance or determination negotiations. The last criteria we looked at was campaign finance, which was a fundraising window. Our recommendation was a window of one year or less prior to the election, during which candidates can raise money. Only a few cities, uh, that we looked at have enacted their own fundraising windows. And I will say, in cities Stanton's size, it's rare for council members to raise significant amounts of money more than a year before the election. Uh, in one of the high-scoring cities, Tulavista, they have a probably going of eleven months before the election, starting on January first of the calendar. In addition to what we recommended, as we looked at cities, we saw some other reforms that they had come up with. For example, a few cities have a limit on contributions by political parties or a limit on contributions from one candidate's committee to another, or on how much a candidate could loan their own campaign. So, before we wrap up campaign finance, there's one last, uh, alternative system I wanted to mention, even though it hasn't been enacted in any of the Orange County cities. And that's publicly financed elections. Publicly financed elections are a system in which candidates who meet certain criteria are eligible to receive at least some public funding for their campaign. For example, a candidate who raises at least a thousand dollars total from at least twenty different Stanton residents, uh, may receive a match of five times whatever they raise in funds from the city, or perhaps a one-time lump sum of fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to conduct the entire campaign. Some states, including Maine, Arizona, Connecticut, and New Mexico, have elections like this. And cities such as Oakland, Albuquerque, Seattle, Baltimore, Denver, and others have publicly financed elections. If you're looking for what we consider a gold standard in terms of, uh, diminishing the risk of undue influence, improving public trust, and giving hard-working candidates a chance to succeed, publicly financed elections are what, you know, people call me an election nerd. Election nerds like me consider the best of the best. So, that covers the campaign finance portion, and now we'll move to transparency. By transparency, what we mean is simply openness regarding the data pertaining to money behind elections. Uh, we believe residents should be able to easily access information on campaign contributions and the contribution expenditures. That helps them be more informed voters, gives them confidence that decisions are not subject to complacent interest. And frankly, if cities don't provide that information, sometimes residents suspect that, uh, cities hide something that's not actually the case. So, we assess three cities on three criteria here. First, do they post the relevant FPPC forms on the city's official website? Uh, we recommend the four-sixty, four-ninety-six, and four-ninety-seven, which cover contributions and the expenditure. Second, do cities make those forms easy to find and accessible for residents? Uh, we recommend putting a link titled something like Campaign Finance Dislosures on the city's homepage of the website. Third, does the data go back far enough to cover every sitting elected official? Typically, if you go back four election cycles or eight years, most cities, that covers every contribution and expenditure pertaining to the current city council. Overall, most cities in Orange County and San Diego put at least some of the forms on their websites, and it generally wasn't too difficult to find. Uh, there are exceptions where a city has links that don't work or forms that aren't legible. And so, one of the basic things cities can do is just make sure that all the links work and the forms are readable for people who are accessing the website. Cities score a little lower in the thoroughness of data. Uh, in Orange County, only thirteen went back eight years. In San Diego County, only nine went back eight years or more. In Stanton, you have some, but not all of the forms we recommend on the city website. Uh, the four-sixties are there, the four-ninety-six or four-ninety-seven forms were not there. But when I requested them from the city clerk, I was able to get them. It's just easier to have them directly on the website. And, uh, the city in Stanton, it doesn't go back farther than July twenty-two. Uh, the data was easy to find. It only took me two road clips to get there, which is very good. So, in terms of how, uh, higher-scoring cities did, I'll just share it through screenshots. In Santee, they use a system called NetFile. That's the most common software that cities in California use. You'll see they have by that arrow, they have a link on their website that just says campaign statements. Uh, click that, you get to the NetFile page. From there, you can either search for candidates or data, or you can click a series of dropdown menus, uh, for can't find election, by candidate, by independent expenditure, to find what you're looking for. And then you get to the forms. Uh, in Costa Mesa, they didn't use NetFile. They also have a link directly on their homepage. And then from there, you go to another page that you can click links by election, by council member, uh, by political action committee. So, you click on what you're looking for, and then you get a long list of links to all the forms pertaining to that campaign for election. So, other reforms to consider that we noticed in the area of transparency included a very novel provision in one city to disclose the true names of behind independent expenditures, as opposed to just perhaps an LLC or a PAC name, giving down to the actual individual or source of the income. And then in, uh, larger cities, they'll sometimes have an additional pre-election candidate filing deadline. So, you avoid a situation where mass mailers are sent out shortly before the election, and then you can't find out until afterwards, reactions. When you combine both pieces into overall grades, you can see the breakdown there. There were two things we thought were interesting as we put this together. Uh, first, getting an A is achievable. When we created the report card, we didn't want to set the standard so high that every city scored poorly. And we think the grading scale we landed on is generally fair. Uh, it's difficult to account for some nuances and discrepancies between cities. Uh, and I can speak to that later. The second thing you'll notice, there's a lot of As and a lot of Ds and a lot of Fs, and not many Bs in cities. That's because cities generally fall into one of two categories. Either they have never passed an ordinance in this area, in which case they probably got a D or an F, or they have passed an ordinance, and the odds are that, you know, of our recommendations that we gave them. Uh, Stanton received a D minus. We don't view that as an indication of any shortcoming or wrongdoing, simply that an ordinance, you know, containing rec- uh, or recommended reforms or similar reforms hasn't been passed in the city. With that said, if you're interested in considering any of the reforms that we recommend, or other cities have enacted, or in changing the way you present campaign finance data, uh, I've provided this menu of different options you can consider. And you can look that over if you're interested. Um, we can offer consulting services, draft the sample ordinance, recommend measures to improve transparency within a budget that you set. Our goal here is really just to give you information we think is useful and give you a sense of what other cities have done and what you can do. Uh, last, the last thing I'll say is, I think residents generally support the reforms we recommend. A few years ago, a city, uh, the city of Alhambra, had a ballot measure that echoed most elements of our report card. Uh, it gave residents a chance to vote on enacting campaign contributions and limits and improving transparency. The pass was seventy-six percent of the vote. So, we view these things as a win-win for both collective officials and residents. With that said, I really appreciate you inviting me here tonight, uh, giving considerations to this. Of course, I'm happy to answer, uh, any questions that you might have. Thank you for coming, and I've been on the town talking on Fifth Year Day. And this is the first I've heard of even having building meetings, so thank you. Oh, I, thank you for saying that, and yeah, I understand that sometimes it's difficult to know what's even possible in this, in this area.
Thanks for coming today, and I appreciate all the different suggestions that you've provided for us. One of the things you had mentioned is having, um, losing certain loopholes. I know that, uh, those are already a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar permit passed by the state. Um, and then you had mentioned there was still loopholes. Can you elaborate on what that might mean? Um, I know that one of the things you have recommended is prohibiting contributions altogether from contractors and developers. Do you think that two-hundred-and-fifty dollars is too much, or are you, you know?
Oh, thank you. So, the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar amount, uh, seems very reasonable. It's more than, so SB fifteen fourteen thirty-nine has a timeframe that applies. It's twelve months. And if, you know, for example, a company that wants to do business with the city knows that a contract is coming up for bid in eighteen months, um, they could contribute the max amount to every council member, and SB fourteen thirty-nine would be triggered. And so, having a general contribution limit can help address that. SB fourteen thirty-nine also has a pulse for different types of contracts. Uh, certain types of labor contracts are exempted and things like that. So, some cities just found it easier to enact a strict prohibition. And then, in some cases, I think that actually can create less burden on city staff to have to check, what did this contribution qualify? What was the timeline? Things like that.
I have another question regarding the, um, gold standard, uh, which is made of publicly financed elections. Um, you mentioned some pretty big numbers, like fifteen thousand to one thousand, which are probably excessive, first of all, to you. So, uh, in our city, we have about eighteen thousand registered voters. We have that by district, which is option, five thousand registered voters. What is a more reasonable amount of something that they, I guess, question for us?
Yeah, so, I wish I could give you an exact dollar amount. It depends on the, what I would want to do is get a more thorough history of the spending in your city to get a sense of how much winning candidates spend and have spent for them to win. We've studied this for a fair amount for different cities in Orange County. So, a lot of can- winning candidates can succeed while spending less than two dollars per vote or per registered voter in their district, sometimes a dollar fifty. Uh, so, if you have five thousand residents in the district, it's conceivable that a ten-thousand-dollar lump sum would be sufficient. But again, I would probably want to study a longer history of elections to be able to better, more educate.
All right, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. My pleasure.
All right, we'll move on to item number six, which is the consent counter. Uh, we have items number A to three I. Is there anyone from the, uh, the group that will respond?
I remember there's a, what, the first one that receives that?
I would like to call, uh, G. And I'd like to call F.
I'd like to call, uh, six I, please?
Six G?
Six I.
I, okay, so yeah. I. F. And G, so.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion for the balance by, uh, by person Warren, except by councilman Torres. Our Taylor, I'm obviously well called up. Council agent, David Van. Yes, council agent, uh, Gordon Warren.
Yes.
Council agent, David Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor, Chief Mayor, Lieutenant, Vice President. And Mayor, Chairman Chong.
I think it was started right there.
To the acceptance of the twenty-twenty-three catch base green installation project by the council, please give me. Sir, Mayor, your questions on the right.
I believe we looked over this, and it said that the final construction costs were, were two-eight-four. And then there's some other charges, right? Design, um, technical light project, other additives, is that correct? That being said, why didn't we not do a design build? Or at least work at a design build? Is it because it was grant by and prohibit us from doing that?
I don't know. Most of the restrictions on the grant included the method of construction. But I do know historically, um, cities are very wary of entering design build contracts. Don't know if these states have historically utilized design builds. I know in my previous cities, when we worked with them, we went through a very thorough analysis with the city attorney's office to make sure that, uh, every step of the way is designed built because it's, it's open for more, uh, legal challenges by competitors who are paying for it. So, I think the traditional separate, still, what is, is more clear path, but certainly in the council. If this is a design build, I would want to establish the, that, all, parameters around that, that all staff and, you know, pretty, committing on projects at home.
It's just that, um, some of the design build budgets can be cheap. And it also puts the burden of responsibility on us. Um, we had a couple of, I think, of four thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars available. Change orders?
Sir, oh, what about contingents?
It was a contingent, I swear.
So, a change order is not necessarily utilized. Almost every construction contract we reach to the council has a tenant.
All right. Anyway, the other thought that I was gonna ask you was, um, if we get somebody to come in and did the whole project plus the sum of everything, and they're responsible for bringing it on a particular date, uh, and they guarantee everything, um, is that what we're looking into?
Right, so what you're talking about is design build at risk, which is at other different levels. There's different variations of design build. And if the council's interested, the city does have set purchasing and contract guidelines. We do outline within those guidelines what the city's, uh, procurement processes, which is currently the traditional RFP with them separated. If the council would like us to research and potentially include provisions for design build, we can certainly begin that process.
Finally, there is a new type of design build that's going around, people using, I'm not sure if it's a design build plan, but, um, you're using, yeah, OC Sandus, right now, that protects us against some of the things that the city would describe about. Now, what's the total of this whole project? I can't remember. There were five different people who came, right?
I have, let me try here. Wanted to make a couple of comments related to this, um, project specifically, since, um, poor city engineer is out there. This particular project, I don't believe, I have the detail of the project expenditures for this project in front of me. And the total project budget for this fiscal year is seventy-six thousand nine thirty-five. Most of this budget was carried over from last year, because they didn't start this project until this year. I only see staff time and this particular vendor, G Two Construction, being charged for the project. So, I don't think that this particular project had any design cost from a vendor. And then, um, I just know from, you know, my four years of longevity, four years, that the last time we did this project, it was the same vendor. So, I'm sure Caesar can respond later, if there was economies of same scale, if using the same vendor, um, for the previous catch base on project. But, uh, this one did not have, just had staff time and G Two construction time. And, um, so far, um, you know, was it, was it, is it within the budget? There's no.
As, um, so, have we got this, this, this one?
I believe what the finance director is trying to say is this particular construction project, project did not have a separate design base. I believe what the finance director is trying to say is this particular construction project, project did not have a separate defined date. Only charge for the actual construction of $42,840 that was paid to G2, and then staff project management.
That's where we are.
Correct, and it's completed.
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? During the item passes. Our next item is 9G, annual comprehensive financial report fiscal year 2022-23, and any related, and related auditors. Mayor Shaw, your questions on the right?
Thank you. I'm Michelle.
Yes, sir.
I read almost all that.
What's that?
I said, I read almost all of that, not tonight. I really was impressed with the report. It was very detailed, and actually, it was easy to follow.
Okay.
However, I think at some point, I think it would be a rooming house, whether you had sort of overview of some of the highlights of it, because there was some really good stuff in there. Especially the fact of the solvency and the way that we were able to use our money and the expectations. So whatever time it takes to do that, there's no hurry. I'm sure you have it along somewhere. And maybe you can get together with Hannah, if the council is okay with that, and we could maybe get a presentation on the budget. I think it's, it's something to be proud of. So I think that we should have it broken down, maybe for later.
So for me, that, that will be the beginning part of our budget workshop. A recap of this, the methods, or the beginning presentation, our budget workshop, which is going to be scheduled for the evening.
Anyway, he goes to you on this thing.
Yeah. Thank you. I know it hasn't been the practice here in my tenure at St. Anton, but in the future, would you like the city auditors next year to come out and do a presentation of the audit reports to the city council? Other than having them on consent?
Yeah, I think the list, the audit, the list of audit.
Yes, these are all audited reports. These aren't reports. Other than staff report, pieces of the act for, all of the numbers come from our St. Anton books, but the numbers are audited by independent CPA from river and depends.
There is a good that.
Okay, we can have them come out in the future. So just to clarify, because I, would the council like us to present twice on it? Once at the budget workshop, and then once when the report is done, because it was more obvious that we've done earlier? Or would you just like us to report when the report is done, go around this timeframe next year, and then not include it as part of the budget workshop, because you'll already have a statement?
I would prefer for it to be done with the budget workshop, so that we have it fresh in our mind when we're making these budget decisions. So now that we've done the workshop, I'll.
It's true, it's true. I think that's great. Everybody okay with that?
Yes, sir.
I'll be okay. All right, Michelle, so thank you again. That's all I had. I'll move it. All, all in favor?
All aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. I guess. Anybody abstaining?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is item 6I, request for proposals for parking enforcement services. Councilmember Van, your questions for staff?
So I pulled this item because in looking at possibility of having parking enforcement services criticized, I had gone through a few emails that were sent out by other companies. And I feel like need a bit more information to have, because this is a, that would. That would limit risk and liability for safety, so I would like to move this, motion to continue this.
Councilmember Van, would you like to table it? Which would then allow my fellow members to review it and then bring back additional information as appropriate, in an appropriate one?
I, I actually had thought about tabling it, and then I spoke to the city attorney, and we talked about the option of motion to continue, so I don't know if there's, whatever you guys think is best. Either it's motion to move or motion to table, I will defer to that, city attorney on us.
Okay, so we will take your action and continue the item.
We've heard of staff regarding how much time they need of research. I, I still get a sense of a little bit of security for any local city management regarding the concerns I have. I want to give them the flexibility to have the time they need to do that. I don't want to open up just the risk in my ability, so I will allow them to support and talk about it.
So at this time, Councilmember Van has requested to motion to continue this item at a future. And so we'll go ahead. I'll have a motion by Van to count a second.
Yeah, that's, I think, a substitution.
Mayor, Councilmember, it is a motion on the, uh, for my, um, I think that.
But if you don't have a second, there's no need for substituting.
I do these anyway.
That's what I just said. I said, if you had a second, then there would be, if there was no second, there would be no need for substitution. So according to, uh.
And I, I stand corrected, and there's a substitution motion that are. The other motion, you would.
Thank you very much. Alice, I respect what you want to do. I'm telling you right now, we're just going to keep the can down the road, and we can keep kicking it and kicking it. Meanwhile, we're advancing public safety. Parking is the number one problem in this city with crime. If we don't address it by taking the burden off our local law enforcement and give this to people that are privately hired to do this, and free them up, and get these people who are committing crimes, parking illegally, using those areas for things like prostitution and crime, we're out of the way. We can, I have to say yea or nay, but we should at least say, let's get it started with the recommended action. Then if we decide that we don't want to do it, notice I do it. But if we just put it off week after week, we know I dragged this on for a long time since I first brought it forward. I think it's important to our constituents, because I'm so tired of people complaining in my community about prostitutes parking cars in our business community, installing their services, people parking their cars and committing crimes, people parking and taking over neighborhoods. If we don't do something, we're missing our responsibilities. However, I really feel that we can get to where you want to go by simply taking this recommended action, which is, I read it here, is to move forward with it, and we can also investigate. Hey, there is liability and everything. So far, every city in this area or in a county that has done this, there's been no problem. But we all know that sometimes you just have to step up to the plate by us making our own laws to fight human trafficking, to fight jaywalking, the other things that we do in this community.
Jaywalking.
Some areas.
And some areas.
Well, you would, yeah, so I'm a little bit concerned, but please disillusion me in this thing. But it seems like this parking enforcement service that we've hired were acting in the back of our minds. Because you just mentioned that it means create, you know, the weight on our sheriff's and mental.
Our sheriffs department don't buy tickets. They don't do one ticket writing. They don't do any citations related to that, to hear, are you trafficking? So it's not taking anything away, and it's not a debacle act. What it is, is protecting the residents and staying. I am very tired of the complaints that I get from our business community, from our residents, from our HOAs, and from other areas of our community, by people that are parking illegally and committing crimes in the areas that they park. And if we don't do something, I believe that's our responsibility. That's the only reason I'm doing this. Right?
So this service would stop crime?
Yes, it's going, you, you cannot believe the amount of crime in this city for people that park illegally. You know, if I'm a robber or a bank robber or something, or I'm going, I can knock off the store, or I'm going to sell prostitution. You can go up there tonight on Main Street, on this end, on the west side, and there's going to be nine hunters parked there, and no parking zone. And they're going to solicit prostitution all night. And then also, those same prostitutes knock out all the store owners in the shop because the store shoppers cannot complain. Now, if they can't park there, they're not going to be there. Stolen cars parked all along Catherine Avenue. Week after, week after late. Anyway, I, I mean, I live it every day. You live it every day. I'm just saying, enough's enough. It's time for us to either get up and take our responsibility to protect our community, or not protect her.
Parking ticket will stop prostitution, sir.
Yes, it will. What do you mean it won't stop prostitution? Nothing else will stop prostitution. It's against the law. It's not against the law to do that.
I don't, I don't think a ticketing system would stop a systemic issue with literally our, our geographic region.
Where, where the John's going to park at night?
I don't know. They still do it. They're not supposed to be there, but they still.
Yeah, but if they get a ticket.
That will stop them.
But we'll also have a record of who they are.
I mean, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I agree with you that parking enforcement is a very cool that you, and I agree with you that our current parking enforcement as it stands is a tough one. We agree on those terms. I also believe that what we are proposing today will set our city, or it will open our city up to risk and liability. And I think that we can further discuss this after more research from staff in an environment that will mitigate any risks that we may have as a council, so that we can discuss this freely. I, I think that would be more prudent, and I want to make sure that we do pursue progressive action. We do it in a way that mitigates any risk and liability to our city. So I'm not saying that we don't do this. I think we can definitely consider it. But I'd like a little bit more information from staff. I already spoke extensively about our city attorney, and our city attorney, about the city concerns that I have. And I hope that with a bit of time, they can come back with more information like this on our options. So I'm, I'm not saying that we don't look into this, but I think it's important. And I, I agree with you that parking enforcement is an important tool to use for public safety. But at the same time, I, I believe that this city, expose our city to certain risk and liability, and I can't want to be that.
You know, this is another tool for fighting human trafficking. And everybody, you're talking to me as mayor, I'm providing, I give right to you, I'm sure you all, I do too. The number one concern is homelessness and prostitution. And the people stand don't understand that we're trying to do everything we can, and this is just another tool for us to do it. But what's the liability? HD?
Mayor, council, the vehicle code allows city health agencies to express the statute that disallows this type of parking enforcement. That says, in terms of non-stationary, on the third part two. However, the statute itself is not a speed to.
And the only concern is an opinion. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, there's an opinion. It's never been, it's never been tried before. It's never been taken for a challenge. So I'm not saying we wouldn't be the first, but there's a lot of cities doing this right now successfully. And therefore, that does eliminate somewhat of the risk that you're concerned about. Just because the attorney general's office has given an opinion, doesn't necessarily mean that's a law. It's not a law. It's just an opinion. And you know what? I would be very happy to be the first city to fight it for it, because I have a heck of a lot of reasons why I think we should be able to enforce our parking in our city, which is a travesty. So if I can get a second, I would like to. Get a second, Adam, and then. Okay? Go ahead. Talk with a question.
Mr. Mayor, we're going with, I think, Councilmember Van's motion, Councilmember Torres' second. Obviously, we will call vote. Councilmember Van, yes. Councilmember Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor Wilson one?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw? I have the highest of all.
Okay, we're moving on to item 10, which is our communication. At this time, the public may address the city council.
Mr. Mayor, wrong. Item 7.
On any items in our jurisdiction. Remember, no items, no acting, be taken on non-gender items. I would go ahead.
I'm seven.
I'm seven. All right, we're going to talk about item 7A, which is an extension of the interim agency ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Estambul, establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of any new tobacco retail business. As defined in temporary moratorium on any expansion on margin, an alteration of existing tobacco retail businesses, pending a study and preparation of an update to the city's government code, city code, uh, government code sectors. Uh, 65888 and 26937, and determining the ordinance to be exempt from sequel. I think before we bring it up, I do have someone from the audience who'd like to speak. I think it looks like Anna Hammond, remember? All right.
Good evening, uh, city, that's my name, Anna Menon. I am here today to add to 7A on the agenda speaking behalf of all the CFOs and secondhand smoke workshop number. First, I want to express my gratitude for keeping this reporting issue on the radar of the city of council. The city council, it's critical that we have continued to address the impact of tobacco in our community. During this application movement, our youth certainly continue to have access to level, level tobacco and it can take all three days or weeks for a youth to begin addicted to nicotine, which none of us want to proceed for, for standing yet. Thank you so much for your time and your speech.
Uh, before you go, I want to thank you for being here tonight. I know you are the last person that we had, and you brought all your orders with you. And we want you to know that we thank you for bringing it to our attention. I know that you've been at many of our different events, especially Alice's, uh, car party over here, and we had a chance to meet you up first. And we think that this will be a benefit, because it gives us a chance to study it, and we'll be looking forward. Are there any questions? I'll just, I'll take them and make them. Okay, I'll move it. Go for it.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if we sit down for a minute?
All right.
Yes.
Let me see my correspondence.
Mr. Mayor, we have them.
Okay.
Once again, if I can get that second, I get a motion by Mayor Shaw. I would now, you can go, call vote. Councilmember Van, yes. Councilmember Torres?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson one?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Sir, I have the five of them.
Okay, um, let me reopen for the hearing for a moment, because we had, I thought this was on item, uh, this is on NA. It's supposed to just, uh, Robbie Kimberly-Rangell.
Are you here to speak on item 7A or something, um, a different topic? Prime-related topic to any of the items? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, did you want, it's a different item.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You'll be right to the old communications.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay, now we can move on. Okay, unfinished business we have done. New business, my A, information important. Information important regarding recent state laws and campaign contributions.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um this is an overview of campaign contribution laws recently enacted by the state. City cover eighty-five seventy-one, S B fourteen thirty-nine. Um which was jointly a presentation that was asked for by the council. We brought that and we're bringing that up today. Right, so first we're going to give an overview of eighty-five seventy-one, local campaign contribution ordinances that we can consider. And the next, uh, that's going to be, and the bulk of our slides are going to give an overview of changes that. Also known as S B fourteen thirty-nine, including F P C's regulations related to the law. Those F P C's regulations were promulgated last November. Right, so our first um slide is going to be on eighty-five seventy-one, which relates to contribution limits. This was signed into law by the governor in twenty nineteen and being effective in January twenty twenty-one. And it basically allows um cities and counties with no local campaign contribution ordinance or limit. To either enact their own or to default to the state's uh limits. Those limits are already set for certain state elected officials. And so those ended up just kind of, you know, going down the pipeline and affecting local campaigns. Uh when that probably went into effect, Stanton didn't enact a local campaign contribution limit. So it did default to five thousand five hundred dollars. That's not where it started with. Um every odd number of years, every about two years, uh increases or increases based on the price. So, um, twenty twenty. Five thousand five hundred. Um, a couple notes on this five seventy-one. It are that. So this is, uh, you know, cities can adopt the limit. They can adopt a higher limit, they can adopt a lower limit. So it's size. Uh it applies to a single election or a single source. And there are other provisions of five seventy-one that is a central issue here. Uh to the extent that the city council decides to enact some campaign contribution limit. The F P C, which is the fair political practices commission, would not enforce a local uh contribution limit. And uh we have enacted, helped other cities to enact campaign contribution. And that ordinance would also have enforcement of that mechanism as well. But those are just kind of practical inspirations for the council. Additionally, uh, a campaign contribution ordinance would not apply to things like independent expenditure committees. These measures, uh, ballot committees and campaigns that relate to recall of the officer. So I'm just going to pause to see if there's any question there.
Good question. You had mentioned that if we were to enact a different limit than what the state, what we're devolved into right now in the state, we would have to have our own enforcement mechanism. Can you elaborate on that, Michael, like what other cities have done?
Sure. So um under the state law, so if the city doesn't have its own campaign contribution limit. Violations or alleged violations would go to the F P C to review and investigate. So different cities have looked at uh different ways to uh enforce their own campaign contribution limits. I haven't looked at it exhaustively, but off the top of my head, I know that some cities' ordinances will say, if you believe that there is a violation of your local campaign contribution limit. Then maybe you can claim with the D A, district attorney. Um I have seen some other ordinances that provide that. If the city manager will create an investigative arm or hire an investigative person to do so. Uh in fact, that's best to figure. I know there's one person at our firm who uh does election law and has been married by a couple, you know, other. Cities that we don't represent, right, to act as that investigator. So there's different ways of doing it and. The word exhaustive survey that the city.
If you find there's a part of investigative finding is a problem, does it go to the lawsuit?
So that could also be governed by the ordinance that your candidate could be uh. Uh or two to the distributor. Or could be funds that could be imposed. Um it could be subject to criminal citations. Every violation is the violation of the misdemeanor. Right, so in different cities, we'll approach this differently. Certainly bring that forward. And there are questions. That's, it's, it's a pretty straightforward slide and the bulk of this is going to be S B fourteen thirty-nine, which is much more involved.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now we. Yes, there's, there's a dozen more slides. All right, so um S B fourteen thirty-nine is looking at. And this is a new law for elected officials. Previously, uh this type of law is only applied to appointed officials like county commissioners. And more recently, it's been proposed on elected officials. So it was quite a ripple in our law that this changed over to elected officials. The general rule is while a proceeding is pending and for twelve months filing a final decision, an officer, an elected official. Must not accept solicit or direct a contribution of more than two hundred fifty with a party, raise agent or participant, or the participant's agent. Right, um each of these words have legal meaning. I'm going to go through each of those. The first is, what is an officer? Uh officers now become elected officials. But now it also applies to candidates who become elected officials. So even if someone's a candidate and they can accept, you know, how much they're legally allowed to accept. Once if they come into office, then they end up being subject to this. Like this. The next uh definition that we would look into is what is a proceeding? What is a license permit or other entitlement? So when an item comes before the city council, what are the types of proceedings that we're concerned about here? They could be building and development permits, construction permits, contracts, uh including franchises. And they do not include certain contracts such as competitively bid contract or personal company contract. Probably a policy that is competitively bid. The idea is the lowest dollar, it is probably competitive, so they'll likely. So these are the types of licenses and titles that are subject to this law. And like this. Uh and then what does it mean for a proceeding to be pending before the agency? So when does that twelve months start? For a decision, a decision twelve months after. For uh the elected officials, the proceeding was pending way, it's before the city council, when it's on the agenda. So twelve months before it's on the agenda. And then there's this, there's this other provision that says when the officer knows or has reason to know that the proceeding is before the city. And it's recently reached the goal that the decision will come before the council. And so there is a couple of guides, F P C guides that I, that are included in the agenda. F P C has like all this. Right, so uh I mean, it's kind of interesting. So let's say that there's a permit for, uh, first, the recreation department. And to me, that would not come before, or sorry, the city council. But if a council member had knowledge that, hey, this item could be appealed to the city council. And if the city council member had knowledge about that, then that could trigger this provision. So it does matter if the council member knows that matter may be. For someone who is appearing before the city council, a proceeding is pending. Once the entitlement is for a city, that's usually basically. So the next uh slide is regarding who is a party? Who are we talking about in terms of uh how this living act works? A party is a person who files an application uh for a licensed entitlement or a contract. And there are also people who may not be parties. They're not the ones who have filed an application in the city, but they are participating in the proceeding. So they might be supporters who come before the city council. So this law could affect them too. If they come before the city council and they uh try to influence a decision by speaking for against it. And they have a financial stake in the action, then they're going to be subject to this law as well. Next slide, please. And then the law even, you know, goes further to the agents of the party and to the agents of the participants, right? So I did have a question from another official not here. Said, what if uh it was S B, which deals with the city, you have contracts with them? But what if a lower level county wanted to donate money? Would that be okay or not? And it was really determining on, uh, was that person a participant? Or are they going to try to influence the action by coming in and speaking to the council? Do they have a financial stake in the matter or not? So it would depend on all those factors in terms of whether that person. Uh donated to the city without a funding, without a means to type of provision. And I know this is very technical and so, you know, certainly this is a new law and if the city council has questions, I'm happy to, you know, take them here later on when they provide. But the next couple of slides are about knowledge. Does the city council have knowledge that a participant or an agent has a financial interest in a proceeding? Because if they're just here to speak on the matter, but they don't necessarily have a financial interest in it. Then these donation contribution laws may not matter. Uh so, next slide, please. Uh can you go like next slide? So a council member would have actual knowledge of contribution if uh that person actually contributed to uh. The candidate or the candidate's control committee. Um and it was disclosed or that party participated or other person has formed elected official of the contribution. Or it could be that a council member knew of a contribution if that party or participant has previously made two or more contributions to that particular elected official. And certainly the city council member has accepted or solicited that contribution. Then that council member needs to know of a contribution. Could. Have to consider whether or not to participate in the proceeding. Um again. This is a really interesting law because a council member may not actually have awareness that, you know, a participant has a financial stake. Somebody can come before the council and say, uh, I oppose this item or I. I, I want you to pass this item. But you may not know if they have a financial stake. So if somebody says, I live in the city and I really want the city council to pass this uh contract. That's not enough for a city council member to know that they have a financial stake in the item. But if they say, uh, I live five hundred feet or four hundred feet away from this uh property. And then we know that they have a financial stake in the item. So it could, so the city council members could hear during the proceeding facts that would illuminate whether someone has a financial stake in the hearing or not. And therefore, if they had donated certain amount to the city council, then the city council member may need to uh recuse themselves or disclose that they had a financial stake. And a city council, again, a city council member does not uh know or have a reason to know that someone is financially interested. Just because they said, I have a business in Stanton and uh, you know, this will affect me. It, it is a very fact specific. What I have taken away from this is this is a very fact specific provision. And it will hinge on if a council member knew that someone had a state in the hearing, had a financial stake in the hearing. And that would be potentially review of what facts that they say. So next slide. So. What are the rules then if someone comes before the city council and says, uh, I. If the, the city council member has taken a donation of more than two hundred and fifteen in the proceeding twelve months. And that person comes to the podium and, and speaks on it, they would know they have a financial interest. So at that point, if the city council member knows that they have a financial interest. In, that they have received a contribution for someone who has a financial interest. Then the city council member, like other council members, would have to disclose it before the hearing. And then recuse themselves of that proceeding. So that follows the same processes that council members would follow before stepping down, leaving the ring and not participating. And then even after that, uh, they, the officer cannot uh. Uh continue to receive, you know, campaign contributions twelve months after the decision as well. So it is a long period of time before and after a decision for which the city council member or elected official cannot receive these patients of more than two hundred dollars. And so what are the party's responsibilities? A party to a proceeding has to disclose, next slide, a contribution of more than two hundred and fifty dollars within the past twelve months. By the party or the party's agent. And they cannot make a contribution of more than two hundred and fifty dollars to the elected official while the proceeding is pending or for twelve months after. Next slide, please.
No, it's an interesting. Yes, you made that law.
I.
Sacramento.
Yes.
Yes, but they're all they're left is in Sacramento. They aren't following. Mr. Aaron, it's a good. So however, it's certainly all this out on board, you know. Which really controls our wonderful decision making. But yet people who made that law have no accountability whatsoever for this. Wow.
Yeah, this has been stringent. And there's a slide later on that there has been litigation on this where, you know, uh, for a long time, campaign contributions like this were just considered the essential person that are right to do so. It shouldn't affect the city council members' ability to participate in the proceeding. But there was litigation on that that was not favorable. And to, to the, you know, it, it, it did not win. It hasn't been appealed yet, so certainly this isn't law. Next slide, please. And there are uh abilities of the city council member to quote unquote cure these violations so that they can participate. So to the extent that um the city council member knows that something's on the agenda and wants to participate, the city council member proactive in return of portion that would be more than the two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh right, but they, it has to be done within thirty days of, that they believe about it. But again, some of these issues can come up in real time where a party or participant come to the podium. where a party or participant comes to the podium, describes facts that make them subject to this. And at that point, when the council member discovers that, hey, I have a potential conflict of interest here, they can say on the record during the meeting, you know, I did receive a contribution of more than $250. As a party or participant, I will participate in this session. And within 30 days, I will return that portion that is above beyond $250. That has to be done and it has to be through a record. And it has to be made by the candidate, the candidates, right? So there are ways to cure that violation so that the council members can participate. Next slide please. So that is, again, the ability to take part in the proceeding, power to return. Go to the next slide. There are also the ability to return contributions following the final decision. That time period is a little bit short. It's 14 days after giving that, that contribution. So again, even after the decision is made within 12 months after the decision, that provision stands where candidate cannot take or a council member cannot take more than $250 from that party or participant. And there is a ability that. The last slide is just about the legal challenge that was dismissed summer of last year. But no appeal has been filed and so this is the landscape that cities are in. So I know there was a discussion and presentation earlier about disclosures. This is essentially a disclosure law in that it pinpoints what is before the city council. What is on the agenda? And for those matters, city council members will have restrictions in place at least as to amounts of contributions of more than $250. 12 months before proceeding and 12 months after that final decision. That is a lot. And so I'm happy to take questions now or later and certainly as they come up. It will be very fact specific as to whether the contribution came from a party, from its agent, a participant, a participator. And what kind of knowledge a council member knew about that contribution or that participant's involvement in the decision.
I have. When the gentleman gave us what he called today, he said there's some unentithed ideas.
Independent expenditures.
Yeah, I didn't think it would.
I, I hope there could be voluntary independent contributions. But at least with the campaign contribution or things that we've been discussing here, it would not apply to independent expenditures. 8571 relates to contributions. It does not relate to expenditures. And it would not be able to be contribution related, not on the independent expenditure.
Also, I believe local committees and not not.
So 8571 contributes, we need to put this on the candidate and the candidate is controlled.
But not other. So other local committees, I think they're probably part of help.
And there's cases behind that, behind that. We are, the idea of this pay to pay or the transparency issues. The courts have said that danger is higher when it comes straight to the candidate or its control committee and not so much for independent expenditure money that is not court meaning cooperating. So with that aside, the candidate, then the limits are personal.
I saw a group that went out with like party, they're going to have a thousand dollars in to put.
That, that's crazy.
I see it happening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, questions? What could be on these steps if one considered on the board?
You would be fair, but he on one from one. Very flawed presentation, so it'd be pretty narrow down, going more.
So based on the presentation we heard, both from our esteemed city attorney and our guest today, I do have a few, a few things that I want to go forward with. And before I say, hey, thank you so much, council member Gary, for even agendaizing this. This is an extremely important issue. And I feel like, you know, out of everyone here, you're, you're basically on your last couple of years. So this is really, you know, this will be your legacy in Stanton.
Saying I'm a lady.
I'm saying you're making huge waves for someone who only has a few years left. So thank you, Gary, for being so bold in agendaizing this. And I give this for a couple of months. So first of all, I agree with what the gentleman said today that we do need to have contribution limits, especially in a small city like Stanton where we only have, you know, at most 5,000 voters per district. We don't need thousands and thousands of dollars to win. And I'm afraid, like he had said, about the 80 to 90% of outside money that's coming in and possibly consuming decision making at the highest levels of our city. So I, I want to take his recommended action again and self impose a thousand dollar individual limit for city council candidates. And I believe in his recommended action, often including $1,000 limit for PAC. But I want a thousand straight across PAC or individual. Keep it really simple and can't, you know, mess up those numbers. A thousand dollars limit for PACs or individuals. And I believe that what he had said about loopholes regarding the Levine Act, since, you know, 12 months and certain projects may need longer. And there are already cities out there that have a better ordinance than us regarding this, such as Coronado and National City. So let's go into a prohibition on contributions by contractors and developers from the start of negotiations to the end of negotiation or negotiation of the project. I think a lot of sense, because that would address some loopholes. And it keeps it simple, $250 is not much. Just do a straight up prohibition. That way the public doesn't think that we're taking money, making decisions based on what, you know, some developer is doing in our city. I don't think it's worth being perception and corruption. So I think outright prohibition on those types of contributions.
Council member, can I ask for a question? We're taking notes when you say from the start of the negotiation. Is there one would be a triggering event that would, that would indicate to you that negotiations have started?
I think that it's really difficult because for a council member, we're not involved in the degree of that. Like you guys might be putting out a paper proposal for certain things or someone might come up with an idea for a project and as a council member, you may not be aware of that. It's exactly involved in that. And so I personally feel like we would look at the ordinances of existing cities like Coronado and National City and see what they have because I think they're already implementing this. I don't see what they suggest, I'm not sure, to be honest, and I am like this is cautious. All right, and then secondly, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, when you said that, you know, somebody could come in with a hundred thousand dollars and there'd be no, you know, and that could totally buy out our election. And that is a problem and that is a transparency problem. So I feel that what Mr. Burke said, let's go and make sure all these forms are posted, especially the forms 496, 497. If there are ever any expenditures, especially of that magnitude, people need to know very easily. That should be on our website automatically. They shouldn't have to email the city board to ask if these forms exist and if, you know. So let's have it on our website, the whole world knows who's paying who for what. And these enhanced disclosure requirements, I think are really important. If there's a way to, you know, go back to our election day, let's just be clear. That's the limit that any must deserve, that we cover all of us. I think that makes sense. We currently have four years. I think that four years is not going to be the order of the act.
Yes.
And just to clarify, all of these back hits were hoped to be provided by each of the city council members. And so those will be provided to staff and then staff will post them.
My understanding is Patricia already has these ones on file, is that correct?
Right.
They just need to be, it's not like they're reactive. Hopefully that's not too much of a burden on staff. I want to be really sensitive to our staff time and make sure we have actions that are easy to implement and not too complex. Additionally, I believe Mr. Burke had mentioned having enhanced disclosure requirement for additional filing deadlines, especially for things like expenses for donations that happen really close to the election day. That way people are aware that, you know, the last minute mailer, that's offset money. I want to make sure that those others are aware of that before they make that decision. One more thing, which is I know that we had talked briefly about publicly financed elections. And I know that this is a very new idea, especially in our county, but it's not so new in other areas of our country. So I don't know how it would look in Stanton, but I would be interested in staff looking into the possibility of having publicly financed elections in our city. And it doesn't have to be a lot, like not a lot of burden on our taxpayers too much. So, you know, we're willing to possibly, and it shouldn't take tens of thousands of dollars to win the election. But I hope that we can consider putting a portion, a very small portion to our budget out to try out some finance options. That is my motion.
I have a comment. The one thing that I think everybody needs to be cognizant of is contentious battles. They're horrible. I've been through a really bad one, Dallas had one. Gary, you've never been on one. So you're in there in the middle. But anyway, you know, by the time you do your website and you do everything else, I mean, it adds up and it adds up fast. And even if you just do one wire in a website, you know, you're talking a couple thousand dollars. You're at large, we're talking this. So the thing is, you know, I'd be, I'm not, I don't really agree with the city finance again because there's a lot of people that for the first two weeks out really got cold and they're going to go out and they're going to do this and then they go away. And I don't want the city losing money on those kinds of people starting to create. But just don't, don't hamper yourself down to the point where somebody can't win unless the Democratic Party or the Republican Party steps in line and goes, here's Ted Brand, go with your election, which they can and will. So I think we need to be very, very cautious in this.
I agree with you, Council Member Warren, that not everybody should get financed by the city. I think there should be a threshold where, you know, let's say you get 100, you know, you have residents to give you a fine bucks or something, you know, some sort of a threshold to nature that you have brackets for. You're not just a random person who wants to file. And that would qualify you for, for a little bit of funding from the city. I don't want, I don't want us to go bankrupt, obviously. So I, I say a very small pocket of money, another pilot program or something, just to try it out. Cause I think it would be worth, it would be worth having all the decision makers at the highest level in our city be accountable to the city, to the residents and to the people and not to any other donors.
That should also be the integrity of the person to handle.
I understand.
I do, I do think there's a merit though to the developers because those guys are. So I think that part we should take a look at. But just be cognizant, don't, don't get anybody in Stanton elected because we have our, our, our vote so low that they can't do what they need to begin to get elected.
Yeah, and I, I hear what you're saying, how it's a at-large versus districts. Maybe we could reach double it for a mayoral race, 1,000. Well, but when the voters are working on one of the others.
You are in the future. 2000, I mean, but I know I'm 0.25. But in the future, you have to realize that if you treat the mayor's position the same as city council members, that didn't work. If you give a, you need to adjust that like some cities, okay? You gotta remember, she made a really good point. If you start running a bottom line that a local candidate raises in this city, you know how big it is. They're gonna find out. They're gonna find out by any political committee, but once you come in and take something over, I see it happen. Whether it's a ballot measure influencing the city for a set of facts. You remember how much money they spent against me, my party, for that, to grab up Liz and her? They spent a third of a million dollars in Stanton. And you would have restricted my ability to fund that. Wouldn't, wouldn't be what we are today. So, so a lot of things you need to seriously think about when you start throwing these numbers out.
There was no restriction on ballot measures or public.
This, this is only applying to candidates.
No, I'm just telling you. But candidates usually end up, local candidates usually are taking the lead. I thought for every power measure that benefited this city for my campaign, which I have a right to do. Now, if you don't have somebody doing that and you have all this outside influence. I mean, I mean, just the Republican Party fighting me, they spent almost $150,000 and that came from the state party against that other. So watch what you do because you can get yourself to where other people control your town. Just a thought.
I completely feel for you, Mr. Mayor. I agree that it is a problem when you have so much money being poured into tax measures. However, this specific item is related to campaign candidates, candidates for city council office. And the contribution limit would also apply, not just to individuals, but local action. The Democratic Party wants to get maybe $1,000.
No, unlimited.
I think for independent expenditures.
Unlimited. So I'm limited.
We can't do anything about that because it's, it's, you know, the Supreme Court has made a decision. However, we can.
Committee can donate or can spend as much money as they want to get one person.
And if they do spend that money, everybody should know that that money is being spent. It needs to be spent on, and that's why this transparency is so important. All these forms have to be on our website.
You're right. Everybody, right?
During the election season, those forms are posted. But you're the person who's accepting those forms.
Especially the labels.
Correct, during the election season.
She posts those the next day.
As soon as the election is over, say that.
Yeah, we always do that.
Since we have Mr. Burke, who is a self best election nerd, and I utilize his expertise in town. He called himself an election nerd, so I was trying to identify him. Could I ask him to clarify questions from staff perspective?
Sure, thank you. You're all making good points, by the way. I really appreciated Council Mayor Pro Tim Warren's points about being careful what he said below. You have to be thoughtful of that, but yes.
Okay, so two questions. In terms of timing, we're already conceivably in the election period for 2024. As you mentioned, some of the cities use an 11 month downtime leading up to the elec, or on time, I guess. So if we were to move through these, what would the timing look like? Would this apply during this campaign season? And then what happens if they've already begun collecting contribution?
Well, I think, I mean, whereas you'd be able to do it if you had the ordinance through relatively soon. And as to how it would apply, I'm not sure to the extent to which any candidates have already started raising money. And so that's a consideration for you. I guess on the one hand, if no candidates have started getting contributions or it's been small and it wouldn't be changed by the ordinance, then perhaps you just forge ahead. If a candidate has already gotten $20,000 of, of $5,000 contributions, then I would recommend applying the ordinance to this cycle because that puts the other candidates running against the medicine in the next decision.
Okay, so it, so it would, it would make sense to delay this to the 2026 election for first implementation depending on kind of the circumstances?
Yeah, if you've already gotten contributions in excess of the recommended amount, then I can see how to.
Okay, I may. I will say that the only two seats that will be up for election this year, this is District 4 and District 2. And to my knowledge, no candidate is going to be there to put these seats up. So, so no one's running it, no one's collecting money at this point.
Carryover money from previous races.
In most cities, you can't.
How does that work?
That's another issue that cities address differently in terms of they set laws on how much money a candidate can use from a past campaign for a future campaign. So that's something you could try to figure out. Yes, you're, so are you suggesting that now there are existing candidates or officials who already have? I guess you're, so are you suggesting that now there are existing candidates or officials who already have significant yet?
Yeah, that was my second question too. And also, like, how is, how is that equitable for a field of newcomers, where they're competing against incumbents who have years to fundraise, along with name recognition? So, it's not that everybody is starting out on the same footing, or incumbents already have name recognition, so it makes sense that. Without limits, they wouldn't have to invest as much. So, have, have you ever dealt with those types of issues that cities have transitioned into then?
Wouldn't say that I personally seen a city in this situation, um, but it's something I can certainly look into more. I think it's perhaps a better question or a good question for your city as well, because you can't retroactively apply a law to, to somebody. And so, I think this would be half the, as you sort of said with the, I think, fourteen thirty-nine, I think, fact-intensive question for, for the council as to what situation are you in? Is the situation such that it would put any new candidates at such a huge disadvantage that it doesn't make sense to do right now? Or is it relatively minimal, and perhaps it makes more sense to, uh, only apply it to the council districts first, and then subsequently to the mayoral election or something along those lines? So, I wish I could give you a complete answer, but the lawyer answers.
Mr. Burke, your, I'm sorry, one more question if the council will allow me. So, your comments right there just made me think of something. Would it make sense then if we had a policy set in place and then to implement that the term limits came out, so that there wouldn't be, so each council member in their district will term out at some point? They will not be able to run again, so then it would, so then they come for the, I'm sorry, the ki-, the candidates would all be on equal footing, would they not? If they all had to abide by this new policy as term limits ran out?
Well, I looked at your, so I looked at your previous campaign finance forms, or at least the council candidates that were on the website. There were only three contributions over a thousand dollars that I saw. And given the amounts, I didn't see a situation, at least based on the data available, that I think would put a new candidate at a significantly disadvantaged to an existing candidate based on a built-up sort of war chest. I'm not sure about in the oral race and how that might be different. But I don't think that would be necessary. I mean, most cities that enact reforms like this, they don't do that. I haven't seen them stagger it, uh, based on terms of years. So, I think you would be okay in acting at least applying to the council candidates, uh, right now without putting a new candidate in.
Okay. I'm a fat cat. I'm rich. I have tons of money. So, I've been raised two hundred fifty bucks a call in a day on my campaign. Can I go and spend my own money if I feel fit and just obliterate, cover the city aside and?
As an individual fat cat?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, so that's another, uh, Supreme Court law. In nineteen seventy-six, there was a case called Buckley v. Volcker that enacted most of these laws. And that case considered whether, uh, limits on self-financing were legal. And the court struck, struck them down, because essentially the logic is you can't corrupt yourself. You're not gonna buy influence from yourself. And so, yes, this would still allow candidates to self-finance. Um, if you enacted a publicly financed, sis-, public financing system, I've seen some of those where it's, it has to be voluntary. You can't force people to do it. And as part of volunteering and getting the public funds, you might have to agree that you're only gonna use a certain amount of your own funds or none of your own funds. So, if you opted into public financing, maybe there could be a limit there. But generally speaking, no, there's no limit on how much you can get.
Do they have to disclose it?
Yes, that does have to be disclosed.
Yeah, we have, the other thing too is, is that, um, whether, you know, that's why the states set a limit. The states set a limit that they thought was the right thing for all to govern. It used to be forty-six hundred, I think it was like forty-seven, now it's fifty-five. But they made that adjustment with the cost of living, the cost of production. And you know what? There was a method to the madness. I can't know, maybe they actually did something right by having that. Because it wasn't too low and it wasn't too high for, and you know, like, the one rule they made was if, if you don't have a campaign limit, you have to adhere to the one by the state government. That's why they said that. And, and most, uh, cities that, and the majority of the cities that don't have campaign limits have a lot of works with it. So, that's a consideration also.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And the point of adjusting the limits over time is something I probably should have mentioned. Most of the cities that enact the kind of limits we pointed out, uh, they adjust those for inflation over time. So, it'll gradually go up a hundred dollars in the election cycle, or whatever it is to make sure that you're keeping pace with the actual cost of things. So, yeah, I think that's a valid.
You gotta realize, first one's to run another district, even if they don't have any candidates, they can take all their money with them. There's a lot of variables to this that you have to be very careful about, because a lot of things you make decision-wise makes it unfair. In fact, there's more ways to make it unfair and to make it where everybody following the government guidelines. It's kind of a stable thing, to be honest with you. That's up to you. I mean, like I said, I don't really care at this point. But I think Stanton's such a small town, you can buy it. And that's part one. You can buy a seat on this council, yes. I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about somebody doing anything corrupt, but there are so many avenues to get funding to run. And so many ways to go and circumvent the way things are legally, that it's easy to move, transfer money from one place to the other, as long as you make that disclosure. And trust me, there are political organizations, there's individuals that are wealthy, there are interest groups. There are so many I couldn't even, do you know how many PACs control our shares department? Nine. Nine PACs for just our shares department. So, I mean, there's a whole world out there that I think you need to take a look at.
Sure.
Yeah, um, some of the, the issues that you brought up already exist in this current, I mean, or both, right? So, I think about closing the avenues, right, before there's a corruption, right, liability laws, health, but for example, uh, the one where maybe you have to get public support from residents, right, that would advise us to go off, uh, towards more, especially in a, you know, in a city that's small, you know, so I think that's stuff. You know, already parties in PACs can do it, right? You know, so apart from what this would solve, I mean, are these issues that you're willing to fix, Dave?
First of all, you're not gonna fix it, that's number one. I'm making real local laws, you're not even gonna control anything. Because until you control outside influences, the way in which money can come into local elections. I remember, you just take one. You just, you just take one of so many to come in and take over. I mean, think about it. A three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, you know, three and a half square miles on elevation. They also tried to take all the candidates out to support if they're wanting the council. So, that three hundred eighty thousand dollars was used to get rid of our existing council at that time. I'm just telling you, it's not, but it's not as easy as you're thinking it is, though.
No, but how does this remain tomorrow?
I don't, like I said, if you wanna be the policeman and have everybody get two hundred fifty bucks, it's not a solid one. Just be honest.
Right. Just a question. I know you are very small for, um, public financing. Uh, if you have a certain amount of money, you'd be good, but, and you don't have a vote, let's say you don't have a security, or just being retired, with money that.
I have it to charity. Yeah.
Throw it into a non-profit.
Okay.
I can give it to you if you want, right?
For another, yeah. Well, thank you. I'll stick around and ask further questions. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Van, please, if I can just step to make sure stuff. You're requesting contribution limits of one thousand dollars for those individuals and PACs. Um, so you brought up an inflation, automatic inflation factor, and then you want to apply that to possible execution. And then you also brought up the prohibition on contributions from developers and contractors. You were unclear as to how you define the start and end of a project. You would like us to look at what other cities are doing in terms of factors, options, or expectation. Would like to have all forms on, on the website without being moved or a period of eight years. You are asking for enhanced exposure requirements on last and information. So, I think you would need some clarification on that. You want us to also look into insurance, city, more than that. And then you also want some general research conducted on what it would mean for Stanton to have publicly financed. Just to clarify, obviously, some of these items will take longer than others. Are you wanting us to wait to bring everything back, to have everything? Or would you like us to bring them back in peace, you know?
I think the things that are easy to accomplish, uh, like, you know, being formed on our website, I think it's, and that's the, maybe. Uh, things that might be harder to accomplish or require more research, such as, um, publicly financed elections, I think, take that as a separate topic. That way it doesn't hinder us from implementing the, the, the fruits that are easier to reach. And I can also add one more thing, is that limiting the fundraising window to one year of, like, the January of that election. Yes, that is, that is exactly what I am asking.
Would it be good enough to look around at what other local cities are doing instead of national cities?
Yes, I think, I, I agree with you. And that's why I appreciate it when you put, pulled up, you know, in Orange County, the average limit is a thousand bucks. And that's ours, Orange County, where there's all these things, and it's our little city, and that's five, five thousand five hundred bucks. I, I agree with you. That makes a lot of sense, local, of course, our county. And that's why I appreciate, uh, Mr. Burke's presentation, where he talks about all these different cities in Orange County that are.
So, we might look around.
Just so that we're competitive and, and not hurting our potential candidates. Because right now, I can see this kind of open door to the Republican and the Democratic in County. So, um, we can just look at that and make sure a thousand is the right amount.
No, I'm, excuse me, we're all in the same lines. You might wanna see how many, uh, types of cities those cities have. A city like Anaheim, they have two hundred campaign budgets. I got my, my ends back. Um, you know, if you take over in Stanton, maybe you'll find, maybe one of the, or then maybe please look at, you know. So, because I think that's another variable. Our recommendation is, I think you would need to, uh, we're willing to get people right, like, for the election. Start this, uh, a year before the finance.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I was just wondering if there's like any actual ordinance or something that would have, you know, a law that's disclosed, who they're being.
So, yes, absolutely. We, uh, we didn't cover that criteria in our report card. And usually you see those restrictions in bigger cities, uh, I'm trying to think what's coming to mind. Obviously, Anaheim, Irvine, City of Los Angeles, if you're gonna look at restrictions on lawlessness and transparency regarding law-based disclosures, those cities often that have their own ethics commissions are probably the best ones to look at. I'm not sure the extent of it in Stanton, but yeah, they're absolutely, uh, templates that you can follow. And if you like, I can look into it, or of course, I'm sure city staff can look at some samples as well. But yeah, I can assure you that those exist and can help get some new resources.
Sorry, I, I didn't hear. I heard, um, Mayor Proton make a suggestion that we research Orange County regional cities versus national or statewide cities. I didn't hear that question.
I'm aware of a thousand dollar, and that I wanna keep it simple, and we're a really small city, we don't have that many voters, and I think a thousand.
So, the only, only things you're asking is to research, and you want us to do, I think you referenced the two cities that were highlighted in the presentation, so, which are not regional to Orange County. And then those were only for the enhanced exposure requirements, that relation of the start and then the [inaudible]. And any of those two things. So, you just want us to research the two cities that were on the presentation, nothing else?
My understanding from, uh, Mr. Burke's presentation is that those are cities that have already successfully implemented, uh, this reform. And, and so I, I use it as a possible ordinance that people can have. I don't know of other cities in Orange County that also already implemented the prohibition for contributing to followers that you suggest people get as well. Still, I have to mention this, that.
Yes, I'm happy to connect with city staff. Uh, the cities we highlighted in the presentation, we're not necessarily the only ones that have such provisions. So, I can, uh, go through and give you a recommendation of policies in Orange County and top cities which is to.
Okay, and for the council, um, this obviously was not on the current plan for staff. So, if you want us to come back to NER, we would like them, and you authorize that, um, in doing this next staff report, to access it to the city attorney's office and pay their hourly rate for an attorney to prepare. I just honestly don't have staff time to return this, I think, timeline with one, since we're up early.
I mean, for, for me, it's not, it's not urgent in the sense that it doesn't have to make it this election cycle. I'm not including them in the. So, that would be helpful to have corruption get ten. Either on the next line into the attorney's office at an hourly rate, or we stop, yeah, build it into our next. I, I think, I think we can wait until, we don't have to. Right now, hey, all the [inaudible].
We're gonna do that, and we have them around the [inaudible]. Just to make sure that a thousand dollar limit.
Mr. Burke, so, uh, there was a law.
And a [inaudible].
Yeah, so it doesn't seem like this is a consistent, you know, thing where people are really working with that. So, uh, so I just, that's, she would, um, [inaudible].
No, I, I, yeah, I, I agree with, I agree with Mayor, uh, Mayor Proton Warren, that it doesn't hurt to look around, especially when I'm, I'm.
Thank you for that clarification. So, that was the motion as restated on behalf of Councilmember Van.
I'll proceed with the roll call vote for the side. We have motion by Councilmember Van, he's standing by Councilmember's word. I will now proceed with the roll call vote, Councilmember Van.
Yeah.
Councilmember's word.
Yes.
Councilmember's table.
Yes.
Mayor Proton's one.
Yes.
And Mayor Schacher.
Do you have a heart, is there a thousand dollar contributions?
It's not easy.
There's no way that that's gonna happen. If you, if you let that, because I can be enough dollars, I'd answer.
Number one, I need.
Avoid. Dole and I are gonna go up and double team Sacramento, if you'll let us go.
So, again, I need the authorization for the mayor and council members to attend upcoming meetings and events. At this time, they're requested by Mayor Schacher to attend the meeting for the city of twenty twenty-four, it's a Sunday event, and that also includes Councilmember Donald Ford. And then Mayor Schacher has an additional event request to go to the Southern California Association of Governments, GAD, fifty-nine annual annual conference. We're committed to action for this evening, so the council will decide if we're not subject to Zewa, and authorize the mayor and four councilors to attend, um, the proposed meetings and events as desired, and authorize staff to make a budget of the [inaudible] and get to the registration and round process. That concludes the staff's report. Happy to answer any questions.
I'll leave it. Uh, what's that, um, now?
For that post travel? So, for the leading California cities. From it, it's two thousand ninety five to two thousand three hundred ninety five, depending upon the transportation per person. So there's two requests, that would be just under forty two hundred or forty eight hundred. And then for SCAD, they actually have free registration for a limited edition fusion. They cover one night hotel, so the remaining cost would be seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred. Total amount would be five thousand six hundred forty, we have the highest.
I just.
Yeah, well, I'm going to breathe it, just breathe. Let's ask. From my. Okay, well, the first time I'm going to get you out of the town. I know just about everybody, but the government secretary. I think it's important that we go to the people that can influence what affects our small community. The one who's still here, a lady in prostitution. Number two, the health and part housing. Take the work it's. I'm going to go to that gentleman that was one of the best lobbyists up in Sacramento that I was working with. The CFP will avail and set us up so we can seize the right people. So we can get some of our biggest Gina Pacific things and our staff will have the work they wants to do. I think I'm going to meet also, Donald and I should meet with our staff here and find out what they want to find out to help our staff basically. I've heard currently the first five presidents in California. So I'm working up there as an officer with no reason other than to protect that job, because I can protect them. And find out some of the things that we can do. Donald has some things that I'm sure that he wants to do. You know, working at the old and the new. And so he has some departments that I'm sure that I'll be able to support him on, as well as some of the things that I want. The good news is, is that I think that it will be a chance for us to visit. Particular legislators that they've also aligned, they're inviting to the conference, so we can talk tomorrow. But, you know, we'll do the best we can. I'm not guaranteeing any results, but I can venture nothing there.
Just might outtalk the other councilmen. I learned so much from a judge that was on the city council, Blake Toppo. He was amazing. That was in leading cities. I mean, it's just, you learn a lot just from that, all the different people. And then SCAD. Some, I used to be in green tech pretty heavy, if you noticed. A lot of my old clients speak SCAD, and it's really good because they do like how to drive through the city. And you get your data points off of that, and you really save the city a lot of money. If you can get down to that sort of data, you know, and you have the personnel to do it, unfortunately. Big city dangers, a lot of them.
There are a couple times. I, uh, making that last time, I asked. How was the process? Getting one, when, you know, if there's something that would happen. But most importantly, I think that is. Really tells us what's there's. Right? So we could do a teach us. More interactive with your council members, you know, bringing programs. So like, for example, Project Home View is one of the. Project Home View is one of the lessons that they had for that day, and Stanton was like on there. All of our investigations. So definitely, I think that there's a lot of programs there that are meant to strengthen diversity.
And I will say that we have a bunch of. Fifteen thousand dollars, a thousand, a bunch of things like this. What I don't want to see is we don't use it. This is an investment on our communities, on the community, especially for someone like Donald. These trainings are a long way, we're all going to be turned out post opening round. But I want to make sure that we mess a lot with someone like Donald, that I can tell him, so that I can make the best decision possible. And have all this network that, you know, so my day is developed over decades, and it's served in the office. We need to have that transfer, that institutional knowledge transferred from my days in the office. And we sort of, we sort of conferences is the best way to, that's what we need. But I completely support, I completely support that, that we, everyone has trained. One of the best.
Or the city manager, that would have happened.
I'll be going. A second. A motion, excuse me, by Mayor Prochette Warren. So just a second, I'll wait that to. We have a motion by Mayor Prochette Warren, he's standing by Councilmember Taylor. Here, okay, all in favor?
All right.
Any of those? During that, I didn't have to.
Mayor and council members, if you want me to make a suggestion, the next item is probably a minimum thirty minute presentation. If the mayor and council would like to consider bringing public comment on that, and so those individuals can then choose to stay for the rest of the council, you know, or not. It sounds like we need maybe a bio break for the members, since we're going to our third hour.
Well, it's his position. For you guys. We'll take it ten minutes.
Would you like to do public comment before the break?
Of course. All right. This is.
Motion.
Yeah, okay, you can have a read on. Okay.
And you guys, if you just speak your name to the microphone, and you have three minutes.
If you go lower, way lower, or you can hold it.
Thank you, I'll hold it. Thank you so much, I'm Kimberly Rangel, I'm here from the office of Senator Newman. I think I've already met some of you, but so nice to be here, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to take a opportunity to both introduce myself, I'm the newest Mr. President of the First Editor, Josh Newman. I also want to come and offer myself as a resource, whether it's to the city council, city staff, or to the residents of Stanton. Stanton is one of my assigned cities along with Anaheim and La Palma. So once again, I just want to offer myself as a resource. If anyone needs any assistance in the state agency, I'm happy to assist. I have a business partner with me right now as well, in case anyone is interested in me. I'll say it's.
Hola, yo me llamo Kimberly Lantel, vengo a introducirme ahora. Yo soy una representante de el senador estadual, Josh Newman. Nomás vengo para introducirme y decirles si ustedes necesitan alguna ayuda con una agencia del estado. Yo estoy aquí para ayudar si ustedes estarían una tarjeta que tiene mi información, mi correo electrónico, el número de teléfono. Estoy muy feliz para dar esto, muchas gracias, thank you so much.
Okay, Kimberly, thank you. Speech right here, see, again.
I know we're going to try your.
And I will say that she signed up for Citizens Academy.
I did. I'm glad, yeah, I knew it was the best way to know the in line out for city council, so I'm very excited to start that. I think that's.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Jackson, pause.
Good evening. Mayor, council, thank you. Have the. I have a complaint about our alleyway. And I've been, I've been in one zero two Dale Avenue, I've been a resident there for eight, four years. And I've been complaining about this alleyway, it's really falling apart big time. Somebody said it's going to fall, get hurt, sue the city. Or ruin tires, or, you know, your vehicles, and I've been complaining all this time. And last time I complained, they came out and threw a little bag of asphalt pads. You know, and I got pictures right here, if you guys want to see it. I mean, it's really bad and deteriorating, it's the alleyway, I know it's only an alleyway, right there on Dale, in the alleyway on the east side. One zero two Dale Avenue, down through California. But it's really deteriorating, I walk my dog out there every, every day in this early game, where you have kids. Adults walking down that alleyway. I don't know what we can do, you know, we're taxpayers, you know, we should have something done.
So are you going to face me, Dale?
Yes.
Okay, are you on the east side or west side?
East side.
You're on the other side, right side?
Yeah, we're going north, yes.
And, you know, the line is here, right? School?
Yes. Yes.
How far though?
Well, I know there's a borderline of Anaheim, Stanton, there's one or two houses.
North side, okay.
I know what you did in that, it's guarded, Stanton's.
Our community is very important. It's taking cookies, so if you're getting all that information.
That.
That's on my.
Thank you.
And he'll take care of you, and he's not using your car, so you can stay in touch with him. You can park.
And we have your phone number, so we'll pass that on to staff.
Yeah, we have your phone number, so we'll reach out to you.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
To be a hazard big time. Okay? Thank you.
All right, Nicholas.
Before I start, I want to give you a copy. My name is Nicholas Dibbs, I'm a teacher educator, longtime resident, not too far from here. I'm a resident, although I'm a resident of Garden Grove, I'm speaking out because. This council on December the twelfth passed a resolution regarding the situation in Gaza and Palestine and Israel. And I feel since the twelfth of December. We've seen the slaughter and killing of more children and families, and this is wrong. The city of Long Beach, the next week, you have a copy of that resolution. The very next week, on the nineteenth of December, included a provision for calling for a ceasefire. The International Court of Justice has ruled on this. If you go to democracynow.org and just watch some of the programs, you'll learn the truth. And this is murder is wrong. And I only have three minutes, and it's not enough time, but I want this council. Councilman Torres had the guts to bring it up, but he told me he's not going to bring up this, he will second it. I'm asking that one of the four of you put it on the agenda, just to add to the existing resolution, something about a permanent ceasefire. You cannot, every minute that goes by, there's more and more children killed, about seventy percent of the victims are children. Stanton is about thirty eight thousand people. Thirty eight thousand people have been snuffed out in the last six, four, four or five months. So how would you feel if this city didn't exist in four months? That's basically where we are, and we do as taxpayers. And I want to bring up that Tulsi Gabbard, Gabbard was a Democratic DNC vice chair. And Congresswoman from Ohio, and she resigned from the Democratic Party and from that leadership position. And is now, as an independent stating, that our government is under the cabal of elitist war mongers. Referring to the, to some misguided Democrats, including our president. And I don't, it's not an issue of party, it's an issue of what's right. This council needs to be on the right side of history, not the wrong side. Our American people, if you look at history, have been spoon fed propaganda for the last seventy five years. The Palestinian people are peace loving people. They deserve to exist. I'm asking one of the four of you, including Mayor Schaub, who's a good friend of mine, and Councilwoman Warren, and Councilwoman Van, and Gary Taylor. One of you, or all of you, please put this on the agenda for the next meeting, just to simply add a ceasefire provision to the existing resolution. And please go to democracynow.org, I gave you this at the end of last council meeting, and also at the State and the City. And I gave it to you, and you hopefully have read it, but go to democracynow.org, learn the truth. And I provided you with Albert Einstein's letter on this. I'm a member of Jewish Voice for Peace, I don't speak for them, I'm only speaking for myself. But the whole world, and this impacts our community. If this war keeps going on, it can spin out of control, and the rest of the world is going to start boycotting the United States. And our economy is going to go downhill. So please, be on the right side of history, and I'm asking one of the four of you tonight, put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on AI that's within our jurisdiction? You have a statement or response?
Mr. Mayor, we have that.
Okay, we're going to recess for seven.
Shortcut, we've already like done a lot.
I'm step for, we have this spreadsheet.
Councilman, we're going to move on to item nine C. And our esteemed illustrious Governor of the Finals Department, I give it a two-hour presentation.
My code is dog.
A business card, a new business card. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for those who are streaming online or in the audience and don't know who I am, I am Michelle Vannigan, City's Finance Director, and I'm pleased to bring to you the media budget review report, senior agenda package. The PowerPoint presentation this evening is going to walk you through the major points of the staff report, and is intended to clarify recent terms, discussion, charts, and other than the report. The focus of today's presentation is going to be on where, where we are in the mid-year, and I want to start with, where we talked about how the major results are, I want to start with where did we start this budget? We're going to talk about where we were when we adopted this budget last June. We're going to talk about whether based on what's happened between June and now, if our revenue and expenditure appropriations are still appropriate. And then give you the status of the general fund's fund balance based on our amazing act for results you saw earlier in the consent calendar, and in how to propose adjustments. And then we're going to highlight some other adjustments that are proposed in funds that mark the city's general. So let's start with a quick reminder of what we were facing when the city originally adopted its budget last June. So last June, our total general fund revenues were expected to increase by three percent in total. That was broken out by we expected a conservative four percent property tax revenue increase. We did expect sales tax and measure GG revenue to be flat based on the estimates provided by HDL, the city's consultants at the time. We did expect an eleven percent increase in our utility user tax revenues, primarily due to increased electricity and gas rates by the actual providers of those services. We did anticipate a four percent, four percent increase in our TOT revenues, even with the closure of the Riviera Motel, just based on the occupancy rates of our other motel operators, and based on how those revenues were coming in a year ago. We did anticipate an increase of parking citation revenue, based on how the last couple of fiscal years, our actual revenues have exceeded our budget. And we did put in our cannabis tax revenue, we knew we were going to start getting it this fiscal year. Remember last year, we had it in there, we had it taken at the mid-year, we were confident that the businesses were going to open. So we budgeted six hundred and twenty thousand dollars of that. In addition, the adopted budget included a twenty-three percent increase in total general fund revenues. That's kind of an anomaly, because if you recall, that same evening last June, we shifted seven million dollars of our contracted law enforcement contract costs from our general fund to spend the rest of our American Rescue Plan Act money to fully spend that money last fiscal year. As a result, that gave us a surplus, and so the anomaly makes it seem like our general fund expenditures were increasing twenty-three percent. They were increasing, and not by exact drastic amount. So majority of tonight's presentation will focus on the city's main operating fund, which is our general fund, which our general fund includes the general fund as well as our separate measure GG fund. Um, we consolidate those for reporting properties, but when we talk to the council about the general fund, it's those two activities together. So big picture, what does this mean? When we adopted the budget last June, our revenues and overall expenditures were three hundred forty-eight thousand four eighty, and that was excluding the two point five million dollars of expenditures being funded by what we're calling the general fund special project funds. That's spending some special projects that used to be funded by our offer funds. Um, after you, should you approve all the budget adjustments in tonight's staff report in attachment A, the revenues over expenditures before those one-time our project costs, formerly offered project costs, is nearly two point nine million dollars. Um, and we will explain why. So this slide is going to show you the adopted budget in orange and the revised budget with our budget, proposed adjustments in green. And you'll see in total, every category is, the green's a little bit higher than the orange, with the exception of the sales and measure GG taxes. They are, I believe, as you can all see from this chart, they're slightly, the green is slightly lower. So that's the only category we have a proposed decrease in our media report to make. Um, in total, general fund revenue adjusted. So going with that saying that our HDL consultant gave us no, expected no increase from last year's actual or this year's actual, our consultant has given us revised estimates for this year's budget that has a lower amount of sales tax projected for this fiscal year. That number would have been larger, except they did mitigate it to include revenue from the new retail cannabis businesses, so it would be larger than it is. The adjustment is ninety-five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars less than our adopted budget. So likewise, our measure GG tax, that's the additional one percent tax on all retail sales. It also includes online sales for Stanton residents who order from Amazon and have their things delivered to their Stanton residents. It includes Stanton residents who get their vehicles outside the city but register their vehicle in the city of Stanton. That's why for our city, our actual measure GG tax revenue is about a hundred and fifteen percent of the normal one percent retail sales tax run again. But for our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four revised numbers, it does include an increase, a decrease, sorry, just like our sales tax. Um, and the decrease, though, is not as much, it's only twenty-four thousand five hundred and thirty dollars, because we do get more measure GG revenues versus regular sales tax revenues. And because this chart looks weird, I can't get this picture, we now don't want to be in charge of each of air, the green bar in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three looks so much higher than all the other bars. It's because in June of twenty-twenty-three, the city had a very unique business-to-business transaction between W Moon Power and this company called Energy Bonds, that resulted in a one-time measure GG payment to the city of over nine hundred thousand dollars last fiscal year. If we hadn't got that now, we would not have, we would have received less measure GG tax last year's budget versus our budget, just like our sales tax. But because we received that nine hundred thousand dollar one-time tax payment, our actual revenues last year were over eight hundred thousand dollars more than the measure GG budget. You know, it's a lot of technical information. All to say is because of why we rely on the experts, and in this case, for HDL Inc., to look into their crystal ball about what retail sales are going to be in the city of Stanton. And so the numbers in tonight's, um, budget are based on their crystal ball as of, as of a month ago. Um, I will tell you that we just received our February payment of sales and measure GG tax yesterday. And when I compare that payment to what we received in February twenty-twenty-three, that payment's ten percent more. So we will, this crystal ball is moving along, and we'll, we'll see, we will see. The next slide kind of shows why the crystal ball is so difficult for even the experts to really get right. Because this pie kind of shows you the diverse sales tax base we have in our city. Some cities you might see who have a lot of dealerships. You might see where the deal autos and transportation business sector is half of the pie. So when people start buying newer used cars, it really volatile, makes that the revenue volatile. Um, in our city of Stanton, every pie is all pretty evenly distributed. I will say that the reason for HDL, our experts, we're calling them the experts, um, the estimate going down slightly this year, it's because of the green and the gray pieces of the pie at the bottom. So green is the Stephen County pool, that is a pool of, that's where the Amazon stuff comes, all of the online transactions come into the county, and we get a piece of the pie. Those sales are projected to be five percent lower than a year before. And all of HDL's information, by the way, is, you know, one quarter behind. So it's based on September twenty-twenty-three sales. And fuel and service stations, which is our gas stations, is over twenty-five percent less than a year before. Now, I want to say that a year before, the average price per gallon of gas was about six and a half dollars a gallon. The average price of fuel, um, as of the time these estimates were, as of the time this revenue data came in, which is September of twenty-twenty-three, was about four and a half dollars, four and a half, yeah, four point five doc, uh, four dollars and fifty cents per gallon, I don't know why I can't talk about that. Um, so that's almost a two dollar per gallon decrease. Obviously, HDL's crystal ball, when they started talking to the budget figure, did expect gas prices would decline. They did not expect them to decline so drastically in the first quarter of our fiscal year, and thought maybe they thought it would wait until later after the summer travel season. But that's the bad news, some of the good news, that's offsetting why our revenue estimates are going down very drastically. We are seeing positive retail sales when you compare September twenty-twenty-three to the year prior, and some of the other pieces of the pie. For example, we have residents and restaurants and hotels, those are up about six percent from the year prior. We have, um, food and drugs, I think some of that is the cost of food and drugs, but those are up fourteen percent. So, um, so all in all, yes, I'm starting off with the bad news first, revenues are declining, but let's start with some of the, let's go on to the good news. Our property tax revenues. So the city's adopted budget estimated a conservative nine point two million dollars in total property tax revenue. That was assuming a four percent increase in assessed valuation, knowing that the city has averaged between five and double-digit percent increases in assessed valuation over the last few years. Thanks to all the wonderful residential development going on in the city, all of those projects, prior city council members and current city council members have approved. Um, our actual revenue last fiscal year came in at nine million, which was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more than our adopted budget. And when the property tax rule came out in August of twenty-twenty-three for this fiscal year, the actual assessed valuation rose seven percent. So from three point seven million dollars to a billion, no, three point seven billion dollars to four billion dollars. The city council residents of Stanton should be pretty very proud that those new home buyers are seeing Stanton as a place that they want to buy their home, and they want to make their home. Because of the quality of life that the city council has brought with our municipal services. So all of these lovely residential, residential properties that happen, the market has bought the prices that the market sat. And so, um, that is good news for us. So we are having a positive increase to offset the reductions in the previous slide, to increase our property tax revenue by two hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred fifty dollars to nine point four million dollars for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Most of that is residential-related property, residential, regular development-related property tax revenues, and property tax that the city receives from state in lieu of vehicle license fees. This next slide is showing utility user tax revenues. You don't usually see utility user tax revenues too much in my presentations, because oftentimes, the revenues are pretty flat. But we have been seeing, you'll see it from fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we're starting to see some significant increases as some of the utility providers have increased their revenues. I want to say that the city's utility user tax of five percent is set in our municipal code, and that amount has not changed. So the city's UUT tax rate of five percent is not what is causing acceleration to revenues. That five percent is assessed based on the gross revenue of the various utility agencies. Water, one color there's for water, one color there's for telephone, one color there's for gas, and one color there is for utility. And you'll see, if you look at the pieces of each column, it's the utility, which is, I guess, that brownish color, um, the electricity, and the gas, which is the dark blue navyish color, that have a little bit picer of the columns between the last couple of years. The other colors are pretty similar size, those revenues in water and telephone are pretty flat. It's the rates from the utility and the gas providers that are increasing, therefore increasing the city's UUT. So although we were expecting like an eleven percent increase in our adopted budget, our actual revenues today are, are showing a lot more than that eleven percent. our actual revenues today are, oh, are showing a lot more than that eleven percent increase. So we are conservatively budgeting a three hundred forty-three thousand, three twenty-five increase in our revenue columns. And that is just for making it flat for our actual revenues from fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. If you look at the two columns on the end here, they're not going up much. We're just truing up our current year budget to last year. And that's still resulting in over three hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue estimate to the general fund. Transient occupancy tax, I know that's an important tax for the city. We anticipated a four percent increase in our TOT tax, even though the last few years we have seen, um, more increases than that. But our occu- our revenue through January, which is based on motel occupancy rates that they collected through December of twenty-twenty-three, is actually bringing, showing less, there's shown a decline in transient occupancy numbers. And we do expect an additional motel to be closing in the next quarter of this fiscal year. So we do have a forty thousand dollar reduction in our revenue estimate this year from what was originally adopted. Our cannabis tax revenues, don't freak out, I'm not changing our estimate. But I thought we might have good news, you might want to know like, well, how are cannabis tax revenues going? Now that we have all four retail businesses open as of November twenty-twenty-three. So I have each cannabis business as a different color of the column. So you'll see, you know, the two newest ones are a little bit smaller in November and December. But this is each month, how much cannabis tax the city has collected for each business for each month. So their, um, tax payments for their January twenty-twenty-four sales are due on Thursday. So we'll have updated numbers. So to date, we have collected over four hundred thousand dollars of our six hundred and twenty thousand dollar revenue estimate. That's on about sixty-seven percent. So I don't think we're going to have any problem, um, hitting that target this year, that's good news. So remember that when you get to our budget workshop. Those were the largest, um, components of the city's general fund revenue adjustments I wanted to talk about. There are other adjustments that we are recommending in the general fund. I'm going to quickly go through just a couple of them, the three largest ones. And if council has, um, more questions about any others on this table or in your attachment, I'm happy to provide additional information. But for those who were here back in twenty-twenty-one, the city council authorized an inter-fund loan from the city's general fund to our lighting and maintenance district fund. It was an inter-fund loan at one point five percent for over nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that allowed the lighting maintenance district fund to pay off the capital lease they had with Bank of the West for the purchase of those street lights that we bought from Edison years ago. And by doing, since the general fund had cash available, we just did an intra-fund borrowing to save the city money. And so the intra-fund borrowing is with interest at one and a half percent of interest. Cause at that time, our investment portfolio was earning about that much. Um, but now we are in twenty-twenty-four, where our investment portfolio is earning more. And we are recommending that the city council approve the district, the lighting maintenance district, pay off that loan to the general fund now. For a couple of reasons. The lighting maintenance district receives property tax revenue assessments that are in the Stanton lighting maintenance district. Those revenues have increased, um, over the last few years as maintenance has stabilized or decreased due to the street light conversion project has brought utility savings to that fund. So that fund has accumulated fund balance that can afford to pay that money off now and still have a sufficient fund balance at the end. So let's pay that money off now, pay off that loan and save the, um, district one point five percent in paying additional interest to the general fund. Or save the special revenue fund up to two thousand dollars. Or we just keep on making our annual repayments and the loan, the, the, the general fund will eventually receive all this money by twenty-twenty-eight. Getting a piece of it every year. Let's start recommending that we should repay it off in full this year. Um, investment income is the other big one. At the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, the gen- the citywide of all funds, because we allocate our interest to all city funds, um, got one point seven million dollars of investment income citywide. That's crazy. The general fund piece itself, net of market valuation, was about over half a million dollars. So we are conservatively increasing our investment income by four hundred and sixty, this is just then, um, the general fund portion. I feel like it's still conservative because these rates are based on two things. One, in June of twenty-twenty-two, the city council approved a contract with Chandler Asset Management to invest about thirty million dollars at the city's investment portfolio. They are experts in this area. So they are investing securities that the city wasn't investing in before. Things like corporate medium term notes, super nationals like the fooding, international fooding. Um, lots of different treasuries, lots of different, um, securities. And not just short-term things, but longer-term things. So taking advantage of longer-term investments that are three, four, almost five years to maturity has resulted in a lot more interest earnings to the city. The other piece is because, because interest rates have increased, the city's late, which is where the other fifty percent of our portfolio is then, has generated its own, uh, investment income. For years, late was like zero or less than one percent. And it's been trending at about a four percent yield every month the last couple of fiscal years. So we do feel like this is a big number, but we do feel like a fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, it's a reasonable number. But don't expect this number to go up every other year because we do, every economist does believe that that will be lowering interest rates in the economist's, you know, crystal ball within the next six months or so. Um, and the last one I wanted to highlight was our developer contributions through January. The city has actually, you normally do not budget this revenue in our adopted budget because they're not really revenues that we can use for any service. For example, funding our public safety contractors. They are revenues like our public benefit fees, our beautification fees, and our neighborhood preservation fees. They're specifically negotiated developer agreements for specific purposes. Um, so we normally don't budget for them. They end up in your committed fund balance for the city council to at one point appropriate at some future budget cycle. But we wanted to true up and recognize that the city has collected this another money through January. I'm going to leave general fund revenues unless you can, if council has any questions about general fund revenues. Okay, we're going to get to general fund expenditures. So general fund expenditures are actually decreasing seven hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars to thirty-three point seven million. You always want revenues to increase in the mid-year and expenditures to decrease. That's a good sign. We're going to explain why. This chart just shows how much of our budget is committed to our public safety. This public safety does include both our contracted public safety as well as our in-house public safety or services like our homeless services, code enforcement, your private enforcement. And as you can see, the majority of the city's general fund budget is allocated to those kinds of services. This highlights the most significant budget expenditure adjustments that we are proposing. And I'm only going to talk about the three largest ones I've talked. And then of course, if the council has additional questions or, uh, have the numbers on this slide or in your attachment, I'm happy to answer those. So the biggest take of, oh, I'm going to mark me here. Sorry, there's a difference between my screen and there. So our largest reduction in our general fund expenditures is in our Orange County Sheriff's Department's contract costs of nine hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars. I want to remind the council that when the county, that when we adopted the budget last June, the county was in the midst of labor negotiations with four labor bargaining groups at the time. And so we were not sure what our ultimate final contract cost would be for law enforcement. The amount that the county provided to us to put into our budget reflected a two percent decrease from our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three contract amount. Now, being reasonable, um, staff members, we knew that most likely our final contract cost for twenty-three, twenty-four, knowing that there was labor negotiations going on, probably wasn't going to be a decrease from our two thousand and twenty-three contract. So we did build in some cushion to our contracted law enforcement figure. Well, the county board of supervisors has now completed their negotiations and has approved labor contracts. And the new, um, contracts do include COLAs ranging from four point two, five percent to five percent. But they're not effective till June twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-four. And then there's going to be additional five percent COLA effective the following June. So most of the impact of these new labor agreements, um, those costs we're going to see in our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and beyond. The impact we see in our fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four cost is only related to certain premium pays, some special pays for some of the sworn positions that became effective December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. So all that to say, our final fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four law enforcement contract shop cost with the county is going to be thirteen point four million dollars. I have a breakout on attachment at the rest of the one. The amount we had in our budget was fourteen point one million dollars. So seven hundred thousand dollars of this reduction is related to the, now knowing the number that was unknown last June. The other two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is related to, I'm sure you've heard Captain Walters and the city manager say that we've had a lot of vacancies in our sheriff's department throughout the year. And so the county will give us in June, they, what they call a vacancy credit based on all the positions that we're paying for. We pay one twelfth of our annual contract costs every month. In June, they kind of were both true it all up. And any of the positions that we were paying for, the other eleven months that didn't get filled, they will give us a credit for those costs. It will be net of the actual overtime costs, the same thing. We pay one twel- one eleventh, one twelfth of what we anticipate our overtime costs are going to be to the county every month. And usually it was, you know, if you have vacancy, the other, the work is what the work is. So sometimes these may be more overtime, but there's going to be some net cost. But based on information we've received from the county contract administrator's office, the city is trending to receive a two hundred fifty thousand dollar vacancy credit net of the overtime cost at the end of this fiscal year. So those two numbers were enough for a reduction of nine hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. Now, I want to preface it, in a couple of months, we're going to have a budget workshop. I'm going to tell you that our initial estimates from the county is showing an eight percent increase, one million dollars next year. Good news now and, um, be prepared for next year. This is almost a free fiscal year presentation. Um, our next significant adjustment is additional city attorney costs. The last couple of years, as the city has devoted more time to litigation, prosecution, code enforcement issues. And, um, we've had some labor matters that have taken more city attorney time. The city attorney costs have been more than our typical average, um, from a few years ago. So this additional increase of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars brings our budget to over six hundred thousand dollars. And that's just based on our annual bills from the city attorney and taking the average on the cost of those and trying to round. And then lastly, um, the finance department is giving up three hundred thousand dollars for the new ERP system. We asked for last year. This three hundred thousand dollars was for a new finance payroll HR system. And we were going to use the general fund special projects assigned fund balance for that. Um, we are giving it up since then. I brought on a new accounting manager who implemented a competitor's ERP system in another place. She looked at what our current vendor can offer at no additional cost other than just if we wanted to enhance some of the reporting features of our current system. So we're using about less than ten thousand dollars of our finance department's existing budget, not this three hundred thousand dollars, to basically migrate from spring brothers, our current vendors, their next level of their system. It's a lot easier, easier, friendly. It'll be less dollars for the city, it'll be less staff time for the city, not just in finance, but the rest of city staff can get used to that system. So we're giving that up. But again, this money is not available for a new special project. Cause most likely in our budget workshop, we will be asking to use almost all of this money to fund a new unfunded state mandate that requires the city to have a, um, permitting system. We have a building permitting system, we don't have a planning of public works, engineering permitting system. So I believe collectively, we're just going to look at the permitting system entire, entire and have to get a whole new system. So it's a trade. Um, the rest are pretty minor individually. You can pair the big ones we just talked about. But if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to highlight them for you. So what does this all mean for the general fund spendable fund balance? The first column is what we showed you last June when we adopted the budget. And the total spendable fund balance was twenty-nine point three million dollars. And based on the adjustments we've approved, all the adjustments we're requesting, it'll be thirty-five point eight million. And it's broken up between the different components I talked about. Fourteen point four million is our reserves that are signed from your reserve policy for things like economic uncertainty, capital improvement, technology, repairs and maintenance and things like that. You'll see the middle number, COLA, that says committed by developer agreements. That's now two point two million dollars. That has resulted that additional three hundred and eighty thousand that we just talked about a couple of slides ago. And that's the accumulation so far of all of those public benefit fees, beautification fees, neighborhood preservation fees that it's, obviously the council has our code we're having to spend. Uh, then the line up the assigned fund balance of approximately two point eight million. That is that special projects number that we're talking about. That when the, when the ARPA and general fund funds were switched last June, the council set aside these project, set aside some amount of money to be spent for some of those things that used to be spent by ARPA like our homes outreach, our public safety, um, pilot group and things of that nature. Those are all my comments about the general fund. Before I move on to other funds, do you have any other questions? Okay. All right, so the other funds with significant expenditure adjustments include these. So in our gas tax fund, um, we are recommending that expenditures increase by seventy thousand, seven sixty. This provides additional funding for projects like the Catherine Street sidewalk improvement needs more money. There was, um, a city match for the OCTA synchronization project on Catella. That wasn't included in our adopted budget. And just, public works have been busy filling a lot of potfalls. And so they spent most of their street maintenance, um, budget on minor street repairs. So, um, almost all of it already. Um, so they want additional forty thousand dollars, guys, for the next, the rest of the fiscal year. And that's good news for these residents. Um, the lighting maintenance and district, um, fund of number two twenty-four, that is just the expenditure piece at five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar payoff of the loan to the general fund before we talked about, um, in detail a couple of slides ago. The housing authority fund, this is a big one. We're going from the current budget of about eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars to over five million dollars. And we're increasing expenditure by four And we're increasing expenditure by four point three million dollars. Forty thousand of that is to increase our city attorney costs based on actual billing so far. We spent a lot more time on housing affordability matters, as you might expect, with, um, having too many specific projects going. And the rest of the adjustment is basically for relocation for Tena Pacific. Um, city manager, we'd just like to request the rest of the appropriation, not knowing how much we'll need. To date, we already issued a contract of two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to an endless consultant to be our consultant to help us plan and implement relocation for Tena Pacific. We've already actually issued over a hundred thousand dollars in relocation expenses to Tena Pacific residents. So, um, we're requesting some appropriation. After the appropriation is, um, approved, should be approved, the available fund balance in housing authority fund would be reduced to five point three million dollars. Um, the sewer maintenance fund, an increase in three hundred thousand dollars in expenditures. It's one hundred percent offset by a revenue increase of three hundred thousand dollars. The city collects sewer connection fees on behalf of OC sanitation districts. And we're just collecting a lot more for them than we budgeted, so it's just a offset. And lastly, our capital projects fund, it's only increasing in total by a nominal thirteen thousand dollars for some additional funding for staff time for our family resource center improvements project. But there's some significant adjustments that involve swapping funding. Total CIP project balances don't change. We want to switch funding, spend certain monies first. For example, we have a project budget for an annual sewer rehabilitation project. Approximately a hundred and nine thousand dollars of that was supposed to be funded by the city's own sewer connection fees. But we have connected, we've got to almost nothing in sewer connection fees. So we're not changing the budget of that annual sewer rehab project. But instead of funding it with our city sewer connection fees, we're just funding it from our regular sewer maintenance fund. So the total budget of the project's the same. We're just switching the funding from the connection fees to just our regular sewer funding. And then lastly, um, is switching funding for how we did the Cerita's street resurfacing project and our city wide street rehabilitation project. We were funding about eight hundred and thirty thousand of the Cerita's resurfacing project, the gas tax money. That project is pretty much complete, that unit is complete. And those funds have been spent or will be spent by the end of February. The city has to spend a certain amount of measure and money by the end of this fiscal year. So we want to kind of switch the money, instead of using gas tax money, we want to use eight hundred thousand dollars of our measure and money. Um, we have to spend that in three years of receipt. The gas tax money does not have a stamp. But again, the total project budget for these projects don't change. We're just changing how we're spending our, which funds are funding those costs. Um, there's no other questions, that really just completes my staff report. And we just ask that the council, um, approve the regulations in the staff report out on this slide.
Good work.
Really, I was trying to talk slower.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yes, it's the quick hand then. We can mail it out.
I don't want to give you a chance to really capitalize it, breaking down, ask a question. Anyway, that was a really good job.
Thank you, all I did was report the numbers and the actual activities. So really, it's a really good job of, pretty much.
I know, because I'm talking about, that was a good job summarizing what you wrote in six hundred pages. Anyway, we're going to, uh, be starting our budget, so you get to ask all those hard questions. I think you can see some of the, uh, benefits of what we've done as a council. How it's been given to us. Uh, there's some things we can be concerned about. One of them I just mentioned later that is, I think we need to be very comfortable about the housing process. We don't have any personal revenue. It's very hard to support services. Other than that, they have almost been fourteen million dollars.
Well. Fourteen million, fourteen million is just what is in the side in your reserve policy. We still have quite a bit of unallocated monies as, um, as I'm assigned, so. I think the two numbers on the side of the, or the mayor's favorite is the fourteen point four, that's in bold. So that's your reserve policy. And then the sixteen point four million dollars, that's the last line called unassigned fund balance. Those two numbers in truth are truly whatever you want to do with them. The other two, you have some discretion, but they're a little bit more restricted. And it's really like to the city council's pleasure, you know?
There's one.
What's that?
One B.
None of these are that. One B funds we put in a separate fund. Yeah, the developer fees are just the public benefit fees, unitification fees and neighborhood preservation fees. And those are in the general fund because although a lot of the developer agreements have specific projects, it's almost like some of the agreements say, do this project, do that project. Then if the city gets grant funding for the project, the council can spend the money on any public facility that they want. So you almost have to do a deep dive, which the city attorney's office, community development, apartment and finance have done the last couple of years, developer agreement type, buy developer agreement, which is special projects. Council already got grant funding for it. And so truly are less restricted than others. It's kind of a mixed bag, I know it's confusing.
And our housing, honestly, you have to stay.
And our housing authority fund, well, after you approve our four million dollars of adjustments, fingers crossed, that'll be about five point three million. Yeah. That's available.
How much is, when we write out our increase in share?
Well, we already have that, so we know that, um, in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, it'll be one million dollars. We know in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, the amount of our contract this year is seven hundred thousand dollars less than the amount that's in our budget. So we know that this year, we are more than covered because we have savings. And part of the council's consideration during the budget workshop will also be, we still have our fund, well, what was once part of funded position that will all be expiring. It's the middle of the next fiscal year.
I noticed that we're bringing in quite a bit of sales revenue, I mean, revenue from parking things. It's, it was up twenty percent?
Yes, I think it was more just a true up over how prior year activity has been. For example, we've kind of been conservative in just budgeting a flat two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. But when we closed the books last year, um, we had over two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of revenue. When we look at this year, um, we're trending towards the three hundred thousand dollar figure that, um, we're talking about, I don't know, Hannah, Ren, want to talk more about their enforcement?
Well, I just think we never want to use our parking enforcement as a revenue center. So, I mean, it's great that our code enforcement is out there enforcing, but we never look at it as a revenue generating, we don't have quotas or anything like that. And so that's why we take a conservative approach each year. Um, just not budgeting for regular increases or growth, but keeping it at a very conservative, stable level.
Yes, I guess in the good, we would hope that there would be less revenue because that would be the enforcement's burden.
And what's our gross, uh, floor account?
So four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars out of our six hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget.
Four hundred and two?
Yeah, we received four hundred and seventeen, that's based on sales through December thirty-first because their tax payments are due thirty days later. So we're expecting their January payments by the end of this week. I think we did receive one today.
And the good news on that is, um, some of, or have basically our fourth members redeveloped them in the June-July time period, but the other two really didn't open and get operational until the summer. So that four seventeen, which is one and a half of our estimate, was really up.
Just due, right.
So if we back, if we reverse that, take our sales tax, we're like, additional tax, sales tax. What was the total sale?
We're going to have to work with Hannah.
I'm going to do some algebra. I'm going to do some algebra and, um, we need to.
Give her a chance, give her a chance, come on Hannah.
Do you want me to do algebra on the slide? Someone else ask a different question while I, and I'll answer while she's doing a math problem. I have this fresh. Calls for service? Uh, not that I know, not that I know of. Director Ren or Sergeant Madonna, do we have any known calls for service for either of the four retail campus hours?
I have it.
That'll work.
Other questions, I'll be waiting for Michelle to do her math problem.
Anything else, guys, that you saw, those you're asking?
Or, or we can move the recommended action and Michelle can give us the answer as we respond.
All in favor?
All right.
If anybody knows anything, there you go.
Seven million dollars, sir, seven million dollars in retail sales.
What was it?
Seven million dollars. We are.
Mayor and council, I have to apologize. I'm, I'm going to request that you go back to seven A public hearing. We were supposed to, um, recuse either council member Taylor or council member Torres based on their geographic proximity to a smoke shop. So I really apologize that if we could please redo item seven A, you'll draw a name out of a cup and one of the two council members will have to step outside the chambers. I apologize, that was my oversight.
Well.
Should we shut your back of the shelf, are you?
It is, we looked five hundred to one thousand feet, so if he was just within a radius, we would just out. PIS map, each of the council numbers.
And you can go.
Oh, no.
You're going to draw.
At this time, the name that was four five B, which is this kind of big double word.
Did you guys see? Were you here in the drawing office?
Nope.
Cheaper. Okay, we're now back to seven. Seven A, wait. Is there, uh, is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on seven A since we're busy? Okay, very nice, uh, we're going ahead. Is there a motion to add these things? Just for a second. Eric, hold on.
I have a local call, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
So I have a motion by Councilwoman Van, signed by Councilmember Taylor, now to go hobo. Councilwoman Van, yes, Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
May I put some more?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw. I didn't have any courts here, but one of these. Not going to know on the low stories back in, to the dais and the chambers.
And Mayor, if you can please close the hearing, thank you.
There's already had communications.
Okay, you can also close, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. No, no, all the communications, we've already told you that. All the communications. Is there any, any, any business out? Announcements? Okay, have any announcements?
How announced, we, we, we do.
Issue.
Oh.
Okay.
We had, we had a question.
Last night, the mayor and I attended the state of the Garden Grove Unified School District event. And, um, we also had staff members, Ashley King and Jessica Leo representing the city of Stanton. If you've ever gone, it is a delightful event because most of the evening consists of student performance. So we got to be a band, orchestra, we got to hear choirs ranging in elementary school up to high school. We got to hear some motivational speeches from outstanding young students who have just done amazing things, um, you know, with the circumstances that they were born into and look like they're going to be just amazing in college and want to the future. So it was a wonderful evening, there was six hundred people, I believe, in attendance. Um, thirty minutes to get out of the parking lot at the end of the evening. But it was delightful, highly recommended, um, for anybody who's having one.
Okay, I'm at this time. Did you read? Did you study something? This team attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, I have mine.
Excited to learn.
Go into my, I'm thinking.
Okay, this is, you've been waiting up four hours. Start your eyes.
It's okay, sir. If we could just turn the microphone on and bring it closer to you, thank you so much.
If you're doing a good job, you hear again.
I'm not doing a very good job. I just wish I had a second minute.
And you're hearing now, it is, okay.
You, you mean the mayor.
Such a pleasure to be here with you guys tonight, so thank you for having me. Um, I will go over the Stanton Police Services monthly report for the month of January. In January, Stanton deputies responded to one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven calls for service, which is an average of forty-three calls for service per day. When not being assigned to calls for service, deputies observed five hundred and thirty-nine violations of law and acted on them appropriately, which included giving warnings, citations and arrests. Deputies made forty-nine arrests, seventeen of those were felony bookings, seventeen were misdemeanor bookings, seven warrant, warrants, and eight were DUI. Deputies issued fifty-seven misdemeanor citations. Our Stanton deputy, our Stanton motor deputy issued one hundred and five traffic citations. He is working very hard and we are all very proud of his efforts. OCSD gang unit arrested two documented gang members in the month of January for various crimes. For a total of, um, in two thousand twenty-four, two. Um, enforcement in January, Stanton deputies handled the following criminal activity in the month of January, which was, had no homicides. Two rapes, eight robberies, which were, um, in the robberies were using different types of weapons in the act. Twenty-three of those were violent assaults, five burglaries, forty-two thefts, eight stolen vehicles and two arson. Investigations, Stanton investigators, we have two investigators assigned to the unit, uh, had a very busy month in January pertaining to various crimes that have occurred. Had a total of one hundred and one total cases that were assigned to them. Currently fifty-one cases are open and fifty cases have been booked. Our special enforcement team, also known, known as our SETCAR, they had thirty-five arrests. Out of those, twenty-one were felony-related crimes and fourteen were misdemeanor. They had zero citations, public nudity, zero narcotics, zero. Homeless contacts, a hundred, all which is high conservative. Uh, probationary individuals contacted fifty. Coralees contacted ten, prostitutes, zero. Out of those, juvenile prostitutes, zero. Hipsters arrested, zero. Returned juvie runaways, zero. Covered stolen vehicles, we have five. Firearms seeds, two. And parolees at large arrests, which are considered our cows, we have zero. The SET team assisted Stanton investigations, which included our north narcotics, south narcotics, north dead, human trafficking vice, north gangs, south gangs. The SET team assisted our vice unit with a search warrant on Flower Street. Out of that, we had thirty-eight suspects were detained, we made twelve arrests. Over three thousand dollars were collected and six gambling machines were found and taken. They are doing outstanding work. Homeless liaison officer, our HLO pilot program update. Our two HLO deputies have been very busy and. Our two HLO deputies have been very busy and very successful. Deputy Young has been selected to work in our special enforcement team, CAR. Our new HLO deputy, Rachel Addington, has been doing a fantastic job. And I think Isada is going into the SET CAR at the end of the week, and we will be selecting his replacement on Friday, which we will introduce Deputy Addington and our new HLO next month. Response times in January, priority one calls, we averaged three minutes and fifty-nine seconds. Priority two calls, eleven minutes forty-seven seconds. Priority three, twenty minutes and fifty seconds. These are all very good times and have improved since getting several staff members off of patrol training. In the update, myself and Captain Walters also want to thank the city staff for being great partners with Orange County Sheriff's Department. The teamwork is outstanding and we are so very proud of our work. Stanton Investigations has arrested two suspects on suspicious suspicion of multiple sex-related crimes. The suspects are facing multiple life sentences if convicted. Stanton Investigations is also working with other units of the Orange County Sheriff's Department pertaining to shootings that have occurred over the past two months. The communication between the Orange County Sheriff's Department and Stanton is truly impressive. When incidents arise, notifications are done quickly. This is a major impact for the community unless Sheriff's Department is getting things accomplished. If anyone has any questions in the community, please do not hesitate to ask. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. She learned with him?
It did.
How was she gonna take?
A challenge.
You're out of here, I'm sorry. Your hand had long. Is there any other business before the city council? Okay. Is any, did you have any announcements about any of our events that I wouldn't know about?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll keep referring, thank you again for everyone for the presentation, State of the City. We got positive comments from residents, businesses, commissioners, everybody. We have our act on Saturday, March third. And we are also searching for applications for the Golden District Program. And we'll work with Mayor for ten minutes maybe to get final questions.
Thank you. Also, I tell you, staff, again, very great job for City and City and PCTA, that those folks have. And you guys have really been a good job. And the Oscar is going to go to Carol Warren. Produced and directed by John Moore. Mike, good night, everybody.